I'm just going to wait on Mr. Wallace to return until I open the meeting. We'll call the meeting to order for the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners on May 6, 2019. If you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance. The small flag over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our correspondence is minimal. We have a post-rock wind farm invitation for a barbecue in Ellsworth from May 23rd and some, a packet, a materials packet from the Kansas Pipeline Association. I would go ahead and move forward with the abatement. We have an abatement for Larry and John Lohman, $397.08 for a pickup sold in 2017. So I would entertain a motion for abatement 2018-20.
I should maybe recuse myself from that because that's my brother who passed away and my nephew, so I think I better recuse myself.
I would move to pay the abatement.
I'll second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Motion carries. Okay. We received a copy of the email sent from John Grace to our county attorney and county clerk. It says, Jennifer and John, this is to notify the county that we are increasing our room rates effective July 1, 2019. Additionally, because of the inability to secure adequate staff and the low census in our assisted living, we have asked the residents in assisted living to move to the nursing home. Should they choose not to do so, we will assist them in locating another assisted living in a surrounding location. We will not be closing the assisted living and will keep the license activated and evaluate our staffing in another 90 days. Best regards, John Grace. I'd like to take a look at the minutes from April 29. Any issues that we need to address in the minutes? This also includes the end of the month meeting for the accounts payable and the payroll. I would say, Dawn, under public comments, Norman Mantle stated that he would like the wind power money to be redeposited into the general fund. That part about and hold it to spend on specific purposes, I think what, I don't know that he used that terminology exactly. I think what he was trying to say is if you put it in the general fund, you can use it for expenses. But the way that sounds, it sounds like it would be no different than having it in the savings account and attributing it to certain causes. I think what he was getting at is if you used it in the general fund, that you wouldn't have to increase any taxes for future expenses until that money was gone. It's kind of how I took that. Maybe we should just omit that second part of the sentence and...
That's what he said.
He said, hold, okay.
That's what he said.
Okay.
I wanted to put a note in there that you can't really do that because if you do that then you...
Right. That's what we are doing, is we're holding it in a savings account for specific purposes.
Yes.
Okay, I get it. That's fine. I don't have anything else. Does anyone have any corrections in the minutes?
I'll make a motion, if you will.
Yeah, sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 29, 2019. Also, the end of the month payroll meeting minutes.
It was all one, it's all the same meeting?
All the same meeting.
I just meant that it's included as actions that we took.
Okay.
Because we didn't have a separate meeting. I'll second April 29, 2019 minutes. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
None opposed? And I suppose...
Cruetz not here yet, huh?
Right.
We could maybe take Jonathan.
Do you think you have a full 15 minutes for us or...
Yes ma'am.
Okay. I would suggest maybe we wait.
Okay, yeah, we're, yeah, it's not till 10:15 yet, so.
I have received a lot of phone calls and questions about what's going on at the nursing home. I'm a little confused by this note that says that they're not closing the assisted living, but they're asking the assisted living patients to move into the nursing home. The whole reason they're in the assisted living is because they don't need nursing home care. Obviously, that's a financial increased burden to each resident. And if the portion of the assisted living, if the portion of that building, assisted living is not closed, why would they not be able to remain there? They're cash pay.
I think he meant not closing assisted living permanently. In other words, it's not closing for good, it's just temporarily closing for right now. That's what the...
Well, what he's saying is he's not closing it, he's just asking the people to move into the nursing home.
Right, or find a accommodation somewhere else.
And why would you do that?
Because he said he can't financially support it.
But a person living in assisted living pays cash. They don't get Medicaid coverage like you do in the actual skilled care nursing beds. So if they're paying cash, it would be less expensive to staff them.
I don't know about that. He says there's only, there were five people in there, supposedly two have to go because of their health conditions, need to go to full care side. That would leave three for assisted living. And with three people, he said he cannot afford to fund, keep the assisted living part open.
But that's three people paying cash every month.
Yeah, but he needs more than three people to make it pay. You know, you had six there.
The state changed the regulations that requires 24/7, uh, 24/7 staff person. And which is, it makes it so that there, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, there has to be a staff person in the assisted living. They can't go on the other side of the door and they have to remain there, and that's per state regulation. And that's hence, well, I'm assuming that's what he's getting at when he's telling, saying there that they can't afford it because of the fact that...
Yeah, I talked to him. I went up, he was here Saturday, I went up and talked to him about this. And that's basically what he said, he's just financially with three people in assisted living, if it's cash or whatever, that's not enough funding to pay the expenses to keep it open. And that's not closing it permanently, like you say, 90 days reevaluate it and keep the license active. So that's what's his position, me too.
Mr. McQueen, we're ready for you, I believe.
How you doing?
Hi, Trent. How are you?
Pretty good. Your service?
Pretty good, yeah.
Well, my understanding is I'm here for some questions about the contract. Is that correct or...
Well, we talked to Rhonda.
Rhonda.
And about, you know, the operation of the property appraiser's office. And she explained what you guys do. And she thought it'd be good for you to come in and maybe to explain your position, what you do.
Okay.
And that's what, you know, where you're at.
Okay. Well, basically, I contract with the county to perform certain functions that we are required by property evaluation department to do each year. And I start out about this time of year doing what's called data collection. We're required to visit 17% of the property each year. Interviewing the property owner if they're home, if they're not, to leave a card with the questions that we would typically ask. Check all the buildings and all the, uh, the house and everything, went on there and look at the condition of the house and whatnot. And that will run, it will actually run up through probably September, October to finish it. But during that time process, I will start pricing the land and I'll start that in July. And I come up, I do not do, well, I do a market value for ag land, but I don't do the use value, which is done by the K-State and the Department of Revenue. And that's what you're actually taxed on, is that portion. And as that goes along, then I start the analytical phase of developing the cost value and the depreciation studies for mobile homes, houses and outbuildings. And this will all, the land will finish up sometime, probably first of September, depreciation will finish about October. Then in November, I do, I build models. We use a linear regression model provided by the state to value homes. That will finish up in November, at the end of November, right around that area. Then I start final review. And in final review, I ride every road in the county and look at each house. I don't get out and go to the house, but basically I pull up front of the house, I look at my comp, comp value, my sheet, make sure, does this make sense, this value for this house? Also, at that time, I check to see if anything's been built or if anything has been torn down, if anything's missing, and look at the actual condition of the house. That will finish up around April. Then we have hearings, April to May. May we prepare to certify to the county clerk and then the cycle starts over.
So your other counties, how many parcel counties are they?
Let's see, Ottawa County is about 6,400 parcels. And Rice County is somewhere in the neighborhood of 10,000. But in Ottawa County, I'm the county appraiser. In Rice County, I just do the analytical work. So I spend less time there and there's less work to be done.
So you are the appraiser for Ottawa County?
Mm-hmm.
And you do the reappraisals?
Well, I do, but I have employees like the data collection and some of the final review that I was talking about. I have employees that do assist in that. They do the data collection entirely. And they assist in the final review process also.
So how many full-time employees does Ottawa County have in your office?
Two.
So you have, you're one of the two?
No. There's three if you count me. I have two ladies that do it. And I also contract out the mapping. Where Terry does the mapping here, we contract out with a company out of Manhattan to do the mapping in Ottawa County.
And how much does that cost?
I'd have to look at the contract, it's somewhere around $11,000.
To get the mapping done once a year?
Well, they do it every, like, each time a deed comes in or each time a, we have an agricultural land use change, anything like that.
So to update it?
Right.
Throughout the years?
Right.
I shouldn't say that. And it's 11,000, what's the name of that company?
Kimble Mapping.
Kimble?
Yeah, K-I-M-B-L-E.
So then you're, as the county appraiser, you're not performing all functions of the reappraisal, but what are you doing?
Doing the analytical work and the, uh, some of the final review.
And is Rhonda doing any of the analytical work or final review for our county as the county appraiser?
No, she doesn't do that. I contract to do that part. She assists with it.
And then in Rice County with 10,000 people, how many people are in that office?
Let's see, two, three, four, five.
With you?
No, not counting me.
And are you contracted with Rice County for the same services you provide here?
Well, like I say, I do the analytical part and the commercial. The, I don't do the final review and I don't do the data collection, anything like that. And they also contract with Kimble Mapping.
Interesting.
Lincoln County's been very fortunate that Terry self-taught herself and she's married a farmer not moving anywhere because she could double her salary by the end of the week if she moved.
Because of the bans for that job.
Right, yeah. One of the biggest one is home companies. I would've never have thought that, I had them hire people away. But home companies, G-I-S, are tremendous on my own.
Joe, I understood that your contract is for the same amount.
It is.
That's, those are the questions that I had.
Okay, I have no more either. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Do you have that contract?
Have it up.
Copy, would you send it down, please?
Yep.
I think we're ready for you.
Actually, four different things here. First being the water softener. We have been battling this issue for eight weeks now, actually nine, 10, somewhere close to that, a little over two months, in which street plumbing has came in and on multiple occasions, assessed different things and fixed different things, and still yet no results as getting the water softener finished or completed.
Why?
They have no idea what's the matter with it.
Well, I talked to Mike about it. He said there was a head, there was a head part.
They're, they're, they're not, they, Greg, Greg was over there on Friday and he messed with some stuff and he doesn't, he's not positive that that's the problem or... And the technical support people he's talked with has had him try everything except for replacing that. And we're at a point now where resident families are complaining because of this. This is disgusting. I mean, if this was in my house, I would have it fixed immediately and...
I talked to Mike, like I said, about the head. He said the part was ordered, so it's been...
Never was ordered according to Greg.
Well, Mike said it was, so...
Well, according to what Greg told us on, told myself, Rhonda and them on Friday, that the part never was ordered. Which to me, that seems silly. If they're, if they know that that's the problem, they should already have had it fixed. And Greg informed us also on Friday that it's going to be weeks before he can ever even come back to do anything with it because they've got him in Salina.
So then why are you calling the same company over and over?
That is where, why I'm bringing this to you guys.
Yes, please go somewhere else.
What we would like to do is approach the plumber out of Ellsworth to see if we can't get the situation resolved.
Are we calling Hayworth?
Um, Hayworth's, I don't know that Hayworth's has the ability to, I haven't talked to him yet, but I'm going to. I'm going to approach several different people to see if we can...
I mean, I think there's a big confusion here. The commission does not micromanage how the actual maintenance gets done.
Right.
Now, when you bring a bill here, we approve it or we don't. So I appreciate you coming to ask if you can broaden your...
Well, see, I'm being new at the maintenance, I'm not familiar with how that all was set up, so that's why.
I understand that. It's kind of disappointing that we're dealing with the situation that we're dealing with because basically, we're now paying someone in a third party to do things that we already paid that third party to do when that person worked as the maintenance personnel.
He was not able to fix it when he was there, so...
And he's still not able to fix it now and we're paying for him to be there as a third party representative.
Then this afternoon, once I'm back at the facility, I'm going to find, I'm going to be making calls to find somebody to resolve this issue.
Is this what we rebuilt?
Yes. And within six months, it did it, within six months of being rebuilt, it did it before. And they were able to straighten it out and it's not done since until just, this started right when the state surveyors were in the facility. And thankfully, it didn't start before they got here because they can't approach anything that is, starts once they're in the building. So, I mean, we were thankful for that at least because they couldn't touch that.
I recommend that you find somebody else to fix it, Ron.
I'm going to.
Yeah, I agree. You was talking about that, well, Bowie's down there.
Yes, that's what I stopped.
Well, but also Roger Hayworth, if he can handle it, fine with me too, locally, or him. And you were saying Bedcores maybe in Beloit, too?
Yeah, there's a company up in Beloit as well that I was going to talk to pricing-wise when we get it done as quick as possible without costing an absolute fortune.
Yeah, fine with me. I don't know who you prefer to get. Now, Mr. Street, you may just tell them then that we're looking elsewhere because they haven't got this done in a timely manner. I guess, when you think of this, you'd be...
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, we've given him several chances to fix it and he hasn't.
And I talked to Mike, Mike said they were getting this head order and it was coming, and that was about a week ago. So you were saying it's not happening, I guess it's not happening, so. So I agree, we need to get that fixed. Do you have any suggestions, Alexis, on who?
No, I just said, I mean...
I'll tackle that, that's not a big deal.
Yeah, you can handle that, you know, whatever you think. I know, well, I was going to say that we've worked, the high school worked with Mr. Bowie who was down in Ellsworth and they liked him and it worked well.
Well, I, but I was reading and there was a lot of good reviews for that place as far as stuff. The other thing is, is the last time that Arjo was in the facility to work on the lifts, which belonged to the county, he left to say, and I completely dropped the ball, and this is my fault, to bring that up here, that is a maintenance contract on that lift that does not have one. The other lifts have a service contract. Greg was supposed to have also brought one of these up here, but that is a service contract for, per year thing. And when that amount is paid on those, it costs nothing, is what I understand, to have them come and maintenance it. It's just that amount that is paid.
It's $577 annually?
Yes.
And it's for one of the two?
That's one, um, per lift. Each lift has its own service contract, is my understanding from the gentleman that has that, that does this.
Well, let's get some of this paperwork squared away because this still says Mid-America Nursing Home.
Yeah, he was supposed to have changed that and he didn't, so...
And let's, um, let's even get the county listed on there because I think there seems to be a lot of confusion as to who owns what and who's contracted or required to do what.
Yeah, I will call, I'll call Peter and...
If we don't get some of the proper labeling, we're going to continue to have issues.
I will call Peter and take care of that, so. I have his direct cell phone number for that, so...
And I think the county, the county needs to be contracted, not Lincoln Park Manor.
Right.
If we're paying for it, it's not Lincoln Park Manor's contract, it's ours.
Right, and that's, that's, I told him to change that and he was supposed to. Now, the other issue, they did get the, by the way, they did get the three compartment refrigerator fixed. And so that has been dealt with. Now, the...
And who fixed that?
Uh, street plumbing finally, after we threatened to go elsewhere to get it done.
Does that mean they had been there several times without fixing it or they just had to come?
They had been there several times. They had been there, they had came and then they came back.
Is Terry the one that's coming from street every time?
No, it's Terry Cruz came. They came and they, they, when they ordered the part, they got the part in and the company that they ordered the part from shipped the wrong part. So they had to send the wrong part back and get the right part in. And then once they got the right part in, Terry came in and he installed it, so that was dealt with. So, um, the, any other, okay. The other thing is the big mixer in the kitchen. Superior Pump and Electric Motor has it in Salina. And they have the ability to fix it. They know what's the matter with it, but it's not going to be cheap. And I called and talked to General Parts where we had the, had it diagnosed down in Wichita. And they said they're pretty much in the ballpark of the cost of replacing it.
What?
General Parts, or the parts of, the Superior Pump was able to replace what they called the start capacitor, which the place down there in Wichita didn't have access to that component. And because of what they do down there in fixing pump motors, et cetera, they were able to acquire the capacitor needed. They, once they got that going, the transmission in this thing is, is out. And of course, that, that thing is somewhere around 20 years old from what we, as best as the research that we could come up with as to when it was acquired. I have no real actual idea, it could be longer. But that, that particular Blakesley B20 went out of actual production in 2012. So it's no longer even made. But this is the, this is the information that I got from him in regards to the pricing. The biggest amount of that is going to be the parts.
Blakesley, Blakesley B20 20 quart mixer.
It's about a $6,800 mixer, brand new.
Clutch and gear assembly, $775. Shifter yoke assembly, $680, $680. Start capacitor, which you said they already did, $30. And two bearings, rings and oil, $275. And five to six hours of labor at $75.
That, that was the estimate that he gave. They have the, they have the unit running. It'll run perfectly in third gear, but as soon as they shift it down to low and then into second, it binds up. And that's because the clutch and the...
Is it a floor stand mixer?
No, it's, it actually sits on a countertop. It's a countertop, so. And just to kind of give you an idea, I went online and I looked up pricing. And the new Blakes, this is the new model of that one that we have. And that is a...
$1,420.
I got a quote from Sunflower Restaurant Supply in Salina for their model that they have. Went online and...
$2,650.
To restaurantsupply.com and pulled down a quote from them for...
These are all the similar model?
Uh, similar in size, but not similar in quality. Because what you're dealing with, with Blakesley, is the same as a Hobart. They are top-notch. They are not the, they are not the, I guess we should just say the...
Top line.
Yeah, well, these guys, these are, and this is the, this is the Hobart one.
Hobart's very good.
Some of those, there are some of these that you looked, when you looked online, that are running right around anywhere from $900 to $1,500. And those, if you read the fine print on those, you'll see that they state that down at the bottom, occasional use for dough. And we use ours there at the facility for dough making constantly. So this, this was just to kind of give you an idea of the, of the price range and whatnot. There's some, you'll notice there, on, there's a list of some down... on, there's a list of some down at the bottom there that I included in that, that just kinda gives you an idea of the price range that you're looking at in regards to a mixer versus getting the Blakesley fixed.
I'm calculating a little over two thousand dollars for the repair.
Yes, ma'am. Um, I figured it was like, pretty close, gonna be pretty close to like twenty-five hundred dollars, actually.
I'm getting twenty-one oh five at five hours labor, so add seventy-five dollars to that for six hours.
Yeah, I, I just, I, um, that was, I calculated, I just kinda looked at the thing and kinda guessed about but between two thousand and twenty-five hundred for the, to get the mixer fixed.
Fixed, yes, and we can buy a new one for a cheaper, a cheaper number for two thousand and a good, a good one for five to six thousand.
Right, and, but the, the whole issue is going to be with, um, if you look at like that one that's at Sunflower Restaurant Supply, they don't supply any labor and so which we would have to um, uh, go to General Parts in Wichita in order to get the thing maintenance. We can't, they don't come here, it's out of their service area, but they would work on it because of the, if we, you know, if something was wrong with it, we took the.
Did you have any representation?
As far as the mixer is concerned, uh.
To fix one or get a new one?
I, I'm kinda hesitant to, well, really in, in actuality, if you look at the mixer itself, uh, the, the body of the thing is still in good shape and all of the stuff is good shape. The problem is, is with it being twenty years old, that's ninety percent of the transmission, which is there in the parts. And so you're, the, uh, if they replace the transmission, the only other thing that could go wrong in that unit is the motor. And at, at twenty years old, you were looking at iffy as to how much longer that motor itself is gonna go.
I would trust a twenty-year-old motor or a brand new one right now.
Well, and yeah, and if you look at the ratings of a lot of these, they're not, um, they're not exactly uh, in, in, you go online and you look at these Blakesleys that even though they're out of, out of use, they're still being repaired and they're still being used and they're still being sold, so. Um, personally, I would say repair it. Um, because to get the quality, you're gonna pay way more than that to get the quality of a mixer that that is.
Yeah, and, and the people that have it now say they can.
They said they can fix it.
Well, then let's do that.
Okay, I will call him when I get back to the facility and tell them that they can go ahead and get it repaired. So, and um, once he has approval, once he had approval, he would order, said he would order the parts and get him there as quickly as he can and get it back to us as quickly as possible.
Are you going to be there today, the rest of the afternoon?
I will be there till about three-thirty this afternoon, yes.
Okay, if we get finished in time, it was suggested that the commission go up to the assisted living and maybe visit with the people that are there. I think that might be a good idea if you'd be willing to take us around.
Yep, that's fine, I'll be there.
Maybe be doing that.
Well, this afternoon.
So, I will be there.
Okay, thank you.
And that was all, I hope, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you.
You're next, Mr. Low.
All right, well, I was just, because of the issue that came up last week with the, we got this letter and you, we've heard about it when we were at our meeting, Alexis, an email and Aljo, I don't know if you had heard it, about the, what we just heard here with the assisted living being closed, at least temporarily, and uh and that I talked to Mr. Grace, I went up there Saturday and because of what I just told you a while ago, he said because two of the residents were going to be going to full care because of their condition, that left three at the uh assisted living. And he said because of like his letter says here, because of the staffing and uh the census level, he could not justify keeping it open financially. So, that's why we have, we're, we're, we're out here with this assisted living being closed and I've now obviously just upset a lot of people, a lot of the residents up there were don't wanna leave, they don't wanna move away, they're elderly individuals. So we were, I was contacted quite a bit and I know quite, quite a few of them because they're residents here at Lincoln and their families are. So, I talked to Mr. Grace about what to do possibly, and he has concerns also about the Lincoln, the whole Lincoln, the Lincoln Park Manor itself, the whole nursing home about, because his staffing is a lot of contract staffing being expensive. He's getting to a place where he don't know if it's feasible to operate the facility. And I said, well, what can we do? I do not want to see this closed. Now, he could give us, hopefully he won't, could, could give us the sixty days to say he could close the whole place. Hopefully that won't happen. I said, well, what can we do to try to keep assisted living home open and also the regular nursing home open? And uh, we were talking possible subsidy, which I know maybe we don't wanna talk about that, some people don't like Mr. Grace, dealing with Mr. Grace, I know we have issues because of he hasn't paid his rent and there's some accounts payable issues. But, I would be for personally doing some type of subsidy for, his lease runs out approximately a year from now. Because I wanna guarantee that we try to keep this nursing home open. This is a two million dollar cash flow facility, they employ twenty-five full-time people, fifteen part-time. We have thirty-plus residents up there, most of them are from Lincoln County. Most of them are friends and relatively know, I think it's too valuable to let this place close. And uh, I know you have issues with Mr. Grace Alexis and uh, I can understand where you're coming from, but I really want us to not let it close and he could do a sixty-day notice and we do not have anyone to take this facility open over at this time. Now, I know we're working maybe getting new management in uh, with Mr. Hay, we, we, we've heard and also other people Alexis you've been talking to, I'm not against that. I'm not promoting Mr. Grace here, I'm promoting keeping this nursing home open because it's not valuable to Lincoln County in my opinion. Now, subsidy, I don't know how much yet. We would have to pay, that would be negotiated. But I think, my opinion is to keep this open and have to maybe supply subsidy. Possibly up to two hundred thousand a year. We've talked about this before, if we get a whole new management outfit in here, we would probably have to give a subsidy to keep it operational because with thirty residents or less, a lot of companies are not gonna come in and manage this if they cannot make a profit. Or, so that's way, that's my opinion. And I don't know if it would be twenty, two hundred thousand or twenty thousand a month to Mr. Grace this year, we could talk about all that, but that's my opinion on this and where I'm coming from. Now, I don't know what Aljo's opinion is, or you Alexis. I don't wanna see it closed, I would be for subsidizing. I think we're at that point, if we don't, I think Mr. Grace could uh up, you know, make, make a choice to uh do something, and I don't know what he, for sure, maybe not. But we're always had this uncertainty for the last year or two and everybody's, don't know what's gonna happen, the employees don't know what's gonna happen. The residents don't know what's gonna happen, doctors will not refer patients here because of the uncertainty. We're at this quadrant, we've been going around for a year on. And I, I'm promoting and advocacy of uh a subsidy which guaranteed open for a year with Grace. If we don't like him, we could, after that year's over, about a year from now, we could go with new management. And that's my, where I'm coming from right now. I don't know, you guys wanna have something to say?
Well, there are two issues with that. Number one, uh, the county has nothing to do with the management of the place, so promising someone money doesn't mean that you know where that money's going at all. We can't cut a check to his employees, we can't, I mean, I guess we could pay bills, we already do that. Uh, we've been giving a subsidy.
Like, well, subsidy is for repairs and maintenance is what it's in or is.
A hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Well, but that's our responsibility anyway because we own the building.
So you're suggesting two hundred thousand on top of that?
Maybe, or maybe, maybe a hundred, we'd have to negotiate that. But, but we have, we, we subsidize, we have seven million dollar budget in the county.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, I, I run a business too and if you give me money, that doesn't mean you know where I spend my money in my business.
Well, I know, we may not know where he spends it. Alexis, if we get rid of John Grace and we're gonna get a new management firm coming here, we've already talked in our dealings and you have, Aljo has, Terry finished it and I'm involved now, we're possibly a two, about a hundred thousand dollar a year subsidy to a new outfit coming in here to get them to come in here.
That's only talking about what we're already get, we're already giving a hundred and twenty in a line item.
Yeah, but that's for.
Let me jump to the next issue. The next issue is if you are to increase that mon, that number, we may not have the budget authority to do that. Um, we have to stay within the tax limit.
I know.
So we can't really incre, I mean, I don't know what that, I don't know how that would work out percentage-wise, we'd have to do.
Well, I think if we agree to this, now this year, I don't know if we could maybe go to the web fund for this year to deal with it and then we would have, I would think we may have to put on the ballot and measure to see if the citizens of this county would pass a mill levy to support Lincoln County, Lincoln Park Manor or Lincoln Nursing Home, whatever it is, we call it. And I, and again, as I know, it's spending more money, I'm more conservative guy in this county, you can ask more people and I hate raising taxes or spending money. But I think there's too many hit to leave this, if this thing closes, it would be like a tornado hit Lincoln, you'd have thirty people leaving, a lot of families would leave, twenty-five employees would be gone, it would hurt the nursing home or it hurt the hospital, it would hurt the pharmacy, it would hurt the grocery store, it would hurt street plumbing, which we've been using, hurt the Los Angeles Home Center, it's a big community issue. Now, and I know you're talking two hundred grand, possibly extra. It's just, but I think it's worth it.
Where, where are you going to get the two hundred thousand? How, how many employees in the county is gonna, are gonna lose their job because you don't have two hundred thousand dollars just laying around?
I don't know. We, we, you use web fund money, one point four million last year to give to the high schools to fix them. I think two hundred grand to keep twenty-five employees here and thirty residents here is worth it.
What kind of guarantee is offering money going to be for the sustainability of the nursing home?
It would keep us going for a year.
How?
Grace would confirm that he would keep it open, that's how.
But he's confirmed a lot of things and wrote us a letter last week that was full of untruths. So, I'm wondering how you personally are going to, how can you guarantee to our taxpayers that if you spend any money on the nursing home, that it keeps it sustainable?
Well, if you would be dealing, dealing, we're gonna, we're gonna run into that problem then and a new management outfit too, Alexis, so we can get rid of Grace.
I think here's the misconception, this is not a new issue. The, the nursing home has been in financial, I don't wanna call it dire straits because I don't think that's true, but it's, it's been in a financial predicament for quite some time. So, the fact that they have the lowest census now out of all the past several years that I've been involved, um, doesn't mean anything to me other than it's the management issue. We can't guarantee people to come to our nursing home just because we give the, the operator or the owner money.
No, but we got instability in the last year of whether this place is gonna close or stay open every week, every month.
Where does that come from? Who, who's saying that? Who's making those decisions? Who's saying that?
Well, it's, the community is, how come we can't, how, the residents are leaving, people are, employees are leaving, doctors won't refer patients here because of this uncertainty, that's why.
That's a reflection on the company that's doing business there, that's not a reflection on the commission, we own the building.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I agree, miss, I'm not standing up here, I'm not Mr. Grace's attorney here defending him.
No, but I, I hear you proposing wanting to spend money on something that we have no, we cannot change the management structure there ourselves, we don't manage it.
I know.
So, we could dump a million dollars into it, that doesn't guarantee that it's going to be spent in any particular way or that it's going to be managed in any particular way. So what we're dealing with is a management issue. So to fund, to give extra funding to a management firm who has decreased the value of what's going on out there just seems um, like the opposite of what we need to be doing.
I'm not complimenting maybe the way he's operating the place. But I don't, I think if we don't do something like today, to some commitment, I could see him uh giving us sixty-day notice and then their place would shut down and everybody leave.
Why would it shut down?
And we don't have, because he says he doesn't, won't have enough, he's not making enough money to operate the place and he's not able to lose money. It's not feasible for him, I mean, while he's paying staffing help and there's only thirty-some residents there. He's saying he's not making enough money to keep the doors open.
But he can't just shut it down, it's in our lease that he can't.
He could give sixty-day notice anytime.
He can get out of the lease. I mean, he's already breached the lease.
Well, that means it closes. Are you, you gonna go up there and run it?
We have some public.
Um, yeah.
The state has taken over how many homes in the state of Kansas?
They shut, they're not obligated to run it, they, they're not.
How many, how many have been closed?
Twenty-two.
Because the state.
They even, they're not running them though, they're not operating them, a lot of them are shut down.
They get new management.
They do not.
Yes, they do.
No, they're not either obligated to do that.
Which ones have been shut down, tell me?
I think Wilson has.
No.
Well, they're not obligated to take, shut, run it, they're not.
Well, like I say, post by Wilson, what happened at Wilson?
They, they brought in a management firm and they put it up for sale while the management firm is there.
And there are people still there.
What I understand though is if, if the, the state would take it over if the, like the help isn't getting paid or the uh food isn't being served correctly to the residents. But if they, otherwise the state isn't obligated to take it over. That's what I understand. Now, if you know different, and you tell me, okay, Grace that shuts it down and you're gonna have a state commander take it over, run it, if you can confirm that to me.
Well, we have hired Mr. Hay because he claimed to have had, we, we interviewed, we had a panel interview attorneys. And he claimed to have had connections with the K Dads department that existed in Topeka. Um, now that that may no longer be the case, since we had a turnover of Garner and a turnover of Secretary of K Dads, maybe we need to look at attorney options again. Because we've paid out over twenty thousand dollars to Mr. Hay in Topeka and you're telling me that basically you see the only option is giving money to Mr. Grace.
Just for a year to keep it open till his lease runs out, then we got, that gives us time to get new management.
But basically, I mean, where does that money go? Is he going to pay off all his old debts?
To keep it operating.
But you know how much debt he has because he's disclosed that in public, so.
He said he would work on getting the debt down and pay in rent if we, if we would agree to this, you know, yeah.
How do we know that he's not gonna take that money and use it at some of his other nursing homes?
Well, you'll never know. But he'll, but he keeps it open, the issue is if we don't, he's got a place here, maybe he could give a sixty-day notice. And that place could be closed and state's not obligated to come over, over and run it.
But he's already in his contract with the, the county already guaranteed that he was gonna pay rent and he hasn't done that.
I know, he's right, you're right.
So.
All I wanna do is keep this nursing home open. You tell me if we could get, if you can guarantee me.
But it's not closing, so I'm not sure why.
Well, well, he, I think we're at a place where he thinks he's not making enough money, he can give sixty days.
But he just told us what's happening in this letter, he's asking the assisted living people who pay cash to move into the nursing home where it's more expensive. It's not closing.
Yeah, but he talked to me about the nursing home also and he's, where he's at with that, with the same problem.
Well, if he wants out of his lease, he needs to come to the commission and tell us that he wants out of his lease.
He hasn't yet, but he may in the future, who knows?
Well, that's not a problem for us.
Well, it'd be sixty days then, and it's gonna shut the doors, you gotta have somebody take it over sixty days, you gotta guarantee me that? I'll go along with you if you can.
Yeah, well, we've been trying, we, we've been contacting management firms and what I have written to the public and what I've said in here before is we're waiting to be able to disclose financial information to them because they don't just come in and take it over, it's not a hostile takeover. But they come in and they replace management.
Exactly.
Okay, so.
But right now we have Mr. Grace.
Well, we haven't even tried that yet. We haven't brought that company to the door.
I know, I'm not arguing with that, taking it over Alexis, I'm just saying if Grace goes to hell with us and gives us sixty days.
It's ninety, I believe.
Sixty. And if he does that.
Did the lease say ninety days?
No, it's right in the lease, we just read sixty days. And he can get out of it, especially if he says that we're interfering with the business. And since we threaten to sue him, he could say we're interfering with the business. So he has every right to break the lease. And you tell me then after sixty days, somebody's gonna take it over, I'll go with you.
But has he already?
But if you can't, and it shuts the doors, I'm gonna be damn mad, okay?
But has he already broke the lease by not paying rent?
Yeah, I'm not standing up for him there. But we still, I want to keep nursing home open, I don't care about Mr. Grace, okay? I'm not standing up for Mr. Grace here or defending him. He has a lease, he has a contract now, he has a license. He has the power to close that place and keep it open, period.
He doesn't have the power to do that.
Yes, he does.
No, he doesn't.
Well, who else is, somebody's, somebody's just gonna write in here, take it over if he walks away?
No, that's why we're soliciting for management firms.
You're gonna, you're not gonna get management in here in sixty days to take it over. Look, we've been messing with this for a year and a half and we're.
We haven't done anything because nothing's been at risk except his rumors.
Well, here we go then.
Nothing has been happening except him rumoring from the inside that he will be closing.
Well, we just got five people that are gonna be out of our assisted living and they're mad as hell because they're gonna have to move to Beloit or Ellsworth or somewhere, so.
The commission does not have control over their management, we cannot tell him that he's not allowed to ask them to move from assisted living into the nursing home.
Oh, I know that.
Well, that's what he's doing. Why would we want to continue to employ someone who's requiring our citizens to move from the less expensive side to the more expensive side? That's not, I mean, we don't have control over that, yet we are employing him by our contract. So it's his decision to do that, not ours.
Well, I know, but he said, and I, we talked about this a while ago, that he said two of them were at the critical, at the stage health-wise.
So you go out and you find more, that's how you run a business.
But right now he doesn't have all these three people and he says he can't keep it open.
But that's how, but you don't run a business without knowing that you have.
I don't care about him, I care about the residents and the citizens, the people that are in it, that's who I care about. And they're gonna be forced to leave.
So you're trying to say.
I'm not, yeah, I'm trying to work with Grace to try to keep it open, and if that...
Are you saying that if, are you saying that you talk to him, and if you pro, if, if the commission was promising him money, that he would tell these people they don't have to move?
Yeah.
So, he's holding them hostage. So, now you're saying that the person who's running our nursing home is...
He's not holding them hostage. He's giving us an ultimatum. He...
With people's lives!
Well, but he can do it, 'cause if he, he ain't financially getting enough money out of it.
And then you're gonna wanna continue to do business with him.
I wanna keep the place open. If that's dealing with him, I'll still do it.
So, you're using, you're utilizing the people that live there as his hostage negotiation for our tax money. I'm sorry. I'm not participating in that. I'm not participating in that.
Then, I don't know. Okay, I don't know. I'll tell his opinion. But if they close it, then they close it. Then don't be whining to me, okay?
So, I would like to know if John Grace told you personally that if we promised him money, that he will not make the assisted living residents move?
He didn't say promise him money. He just said if we gave him a subsidy, he could afford to keep it open. That's what it is. Now, you could call that a bribe, or you could call that blackmail. I don't know. But that's business. If not, they're not now. We got people moving out. Now, it's gonna be that way with the whole nursing home here before long, in my opinion.
Which is why we needed to take legal action, and I presented it to this board.
You could sue him. What's that gonna do? That's gonna tie up in court, you know?
That, no, we've, we've already been told by our legal counsel that that validates, if he cannot pay his bills to us, which he has already not paid his rent, we haven't requested it through the legal means necessary, and it validates his financial insecurity and his financial, financial destitution at that point, which we have not done. And that's our burden. So, I've presented to this commission the option that we need to be taking. Okay.
Well, is, why is suing you gonna help anything?
Because if...
I wanna clarify something. If I'm reading this right, we have sixty days from the day that he defaults. But he has, he doesn't have any options out unless we commit specific things. And with that, then he has to give us notice ninety days prior to the expiration of the lease agreement. So, he doesn't have a sixty-day out.
Okay. Well, I thought it said sixty days.
For us, for us.
That's on us.
Doesn't he have sixty days also?
No.
I thought it said red at the lease.
No.
So, what's he have, ninety then?
Upon default by Lincoln Park Manor. Um, there's a section of fourteen, so that sixty days is an out section. Fourteen, termination by Lincoln Park Manor. Lincoln Park Manor may, may by written notice to the county terminate the lease upon the occurrence of any of the following events. A, the county or any of its officers, employees, agents, or representatives substantially and unreasonably interfered with Lincoln Park Manor's operation of, or Lincoln Park's operation of the facility. The parties agree to fully then cooperate in a transition to a new operating arrangement of the resident care. B, the facility is condemned by a responsible regulatory or judicial finding that is so inadequate as to present significant health issues. That's their only outs. And then it says that they must, in the, in the renewal time period, make notice to you within ninety days prior to the termination of the lease agreement.
Which would be next January. Or February.
Uh, I'm not an attorney, but I'm not reading sixty days.
Right. I didn't, I, and I remembered the ninety from reading through it.
I will say a few things. I think you're right, Randy. I think the vitalness of this, keeping this business open is vital. When we come to subsidies, this county is already subsidizing that business. Number one, we provide the building, and we provide the upkeep, and we have not received any rent. And so, we are probably, as I, my estimation is that we are somewhere close to a hundred-and-fifty thousand, if not more, right now subsidizing a business in this county. We are committed to five-hundred thousand or ten mills to the county hospital. How many mills will it take to keep the nursing home open is the question. And how much are the people of this, uh, community, this county, willing to, to do that? Unfortunately, the man that needs to be at the table with us has not been at the table for over a year. We need a direct communication with Mr. Grace, and I am disappointed that he would send out a letter like this without coming to this board and explaining to us the dire circumstances that he finds himself in. To me, that is a great failure on his part. I have not been in contact with him, nor has he contacted me. Uh, but I do feel that he has an obligation to this board to come and present the facts to us. We have had many proposals come to this board about, uh, doing some changes. I am very uncomfortable of taking somebody's payables over. Extremely uncomfortable. I don't, I think there's probably a lot of people in this county of Lincoln that would like for the county to pay their payables. But we don't have the money to pay all the payables. Alexis is right. Budget constraints are gonna be a problem when we start handing out more money. Uh, we are limited by the state legislature on how much we can increase spending in this county. And certainly, the subsidy that you're talking about, Randy, though I think it's probably accurate, I don't know that it, we can do it in our budget. We have this pot of money sitting out there. People have always warned me, when there's money out there, beware. And everybody is wanting that money, you know? And I don't know what. John Grace knew about Lincoln County, but I think maybe John Grace knew there was a large bunch of money out there, uh, that's sitting out there. And it's sitting there because when we get into situations like this, we may need it. Now, is this a viable time for us to pull some money? I don't know. We pulled some to remodel it because it needed remodeling. We didn't do all of it, but we did a sizable amount of, of remodeling. But, uh, we're, we're dealing with an old building, people, and there's gonna be continued expenses even of the remodeling. I would agree with Randy that we've got to keep it open. But I am not here in a position where I would do anything today without John Grace sitting down in front of me. Now, can we keep that assisted living open for thirty days while we have a conversation with him? We probably can, you know, maybe in thirty days. But at the end of thirty days, if that closes, and those residents haven't made some type of an arrangement to go somewhere, what are they going to do? That's the thing that's facing the families right now, is you need to be prepared for what's coming down the road in thirty days. You know, so we're, we're kinda on a, a tight timeline here. I guess my proposal would, that I would like for Mr. Grace to extend that out a little to give us some time to, to visit with the residents. If we have to do something in the short term, we can do it. I don't think this county is going to be able to sustain two-hundred thousand a year in subsidies to that nursing home. I know it can't without a vote of people, and they'd like to give us a mill of each to do it. And that'll be the same way the hospital is. The problem with that is, the hospital is a public entity. This nursing home is a private business, people. It's a private business. The county, even though we own the building, we don't, we're not the business. We just provide a shell for this to operate. Now, we can become like, I suppose we could form a board some way and make it a nonprofit and the county own it. I don't like government-owned businesses. I'll tell you right now. I don't think they're very profitable. But if this county needs that nursing home, that may be our option. But I would agree with you, Randy. I think we need to do what we can in the short term to keep this open. Do I think we need a new management team? I don't know. I haven't been very happy with the way things have gone the last couple of years. But it doesn't say that a new management team will be any different. But I think we need to keep it open.
I'm still wondering why it's closing. I mean, where is this even coming from?
You know, we, we talk a lot about this, but as I read this letter that he said, the inability to secure adequate staff is what he says. He mentions, and the low census. Evidently, he can't find the people to staff the place.
But that also means low census means he can't find people to live there. So, how do you fix this?
At the present time, the census is low. Nursing homes go through this all the time. They're high, they're low.
So, then why is that a threat for closure if you're saying that it's normal activity?
Because he can't get the staff. I'm not even sure that if it's full, he can get the staff. To me, it looks like the staff is the problem. Having staff on duty. Now, I don't know that. He's not here. I can't pin him down. He has got to be at the table, people.
Well, if he's gonna get rid of these, these three people that are up there in assisted living, and then he's gonna go back in ninety days and assist it, or...
Assess it.
Assess it. How is he gonna have more people in the assisted living if he's getting rid of them now?
That, you, you make a very good point. Once you close something, it's very difficult to reopen it.
Yeah.
I mean, you're not closing it, but you are. You're moving the residents out. It's very hard to get the residents back. You know, are they gonna move back in, and then in ninety days, say, give another one of these notices, you know?
Right.
You, you're, Randy, you were right. We've got to have some security. We've got to have some consistency that we can depend on that that home is gonna be open in December, you know?
Yeah. That's all I'm asking for. I know it's difficult. I know we have budget constraints. Alexis and Elvah, you're both right on that stuff. I know that. I just don't wanna see an industry, or whatever you call it, that employs twenty-five people, fifteen more, and then you got thirty residents, residents that, most of them are family members and friends. It's a valuable thing for our county, and it supports the hospital, the rest of the businesses. It would just be a big hit if it closes. And I know you, there's issues on all this, but I, that's my bottom line.
But it currently owes the hospital almost thirty thousand dollars. That's more business than they probably give them in six months' worth of activity. So, to make the argument, and, and, and I personally know there are people that have applied there that have not gotten jobs. So, it's not a staffing issue. This is called forceful tactical negotiation. And if you want to be suckers to it, then...
Well, then what's your solution?
My solution is we find someone who wants to run it properly, because there is no evidence to suggest that it cannot sustain itself. We haven't seen audited financials. We don't have any kind of actual mon, monetary numbers to go by. And he already made an offer to this board that he would run it for five percent of the gross. Why would you make an offer on a business like that if it's so destitute that you're closing it down? This is a threat, and I take it as a threat.
Well, then we'll do nothing. That's what, for right now, nothing.
No, we bring in a management firm. That's what we do.
Well...
We cannot remove him from the premises until we actually evict him. So, if this board would like to continue on with the legal, proper actions, I would be glad to support it. Until we do that, then we are doing nothing, Randy. Nothing is not getting rid of the problem.
So, if you're gonna, wanna go to a lawsuit today to evict him, is that what you wanna do?
Absolutely.
What do you think that could be, though?
He'll have to defend himself. That's not up to me.
You think then he'll give us ninety days and close it?
He cannot close the facility. Don just read the portion of the lease.
He's due ninety days. He can...
He can, he can tell us that he wants to opt out, which then provides the perfect opportunity for us to bring in a management company that makes the same offer that he did, five percent of the gross revenue.
And we're gonna have that in, in place in ninety days?
How will we know that until we actually extend an offer to any of these management firms? We haven't.
I'm just saying, he could, he has the power right now with the license. He could just say, I'm gonna give you ninety days. I'm gonna close this place down. And, and what is...
He cannot do that, even according to state law. He cannot do that. He has to actually notify the state, and at that point, that triggers receivership, which is what Mr....
And you're gonna state guarantee that's gonna run it?
They don't run it. They bring in a management firm.
Not everywhere they don't either. You, so every, so every nursing home that's been shut down last year, the state took over, they're all operating now, but the state financed them?
Yes.
Okay, well, then let's go ahead and do that. Thank you. You're a hundred percent of doing it that way.
If you remember correctly, the last time we talked, we spoke with Attorney Hay, he was going to get back to us with what the new administration's viewpoint was on this kind of concept of it.
And I think we're gonna talk with him later today, aren't we? Is Jennifer, did Jennifer get with you, Don, and about getting with Mr. Hay today?
He's not available until after one o'clock.
Okay. Well, yeah, we need to deal with that. I'm not a give, Alexis, I'm not give for Mr., I'm not for, for Mr. Grace. I'm for keeping this place open, okay? That's my...
I'm not for negotiating with terrorism.
And if you could do that, I don't care how we do it. We don't have to keep Grace in there. I'm not in love with him. But I wanna keep this place open.
There is no part of me that thinks that it's closing. And I think that's the issue here. There's no part of me, you, you keep saying you wanna keep it open. There is nothing for, to indicate that it is closing, other than these empty threats that come along with a proposal for money, money from the commission. If you give me money, then I won't do this, that, or the other thing, which is nothing more than abuse of the residents. It's, it's abuse to the people who live there.
Okay.
And my question, my question to you, Randy, is, if Ms., if Mr. Grace signed a lease with us, and the lease says that we were going to designate a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars a year, and Mr. Grace was privy to the financial information of Kristen Robinson, who owned it before, and they even co-owned it for a time, according to the paperwork, okay? That's all open record. You can look it up yourself. If that is true, and he knew that, and he signed the lease, then why is he requesting more money now? He, he committed to that for three years. If you were a business investor, wouldn't you have enough capital to float yourself for those three years, knowing the finances ahead of time? Business people that deal with multimillion-dollar businesses, they don't come in a year later and say, whoops, I couldn't afford it. You know that you have the working capital to sustain yourself through an initial investment. And if that was a three-year period that he signed on for, why would we be subsidizing before the three-year period is up?
Because he's in a financial situation where he wants out of it, maybe. If he's not making money, he doesn't wanna keep operating in Alexis.
Then he needs to come to us and say he wants out of the lease, and then he will turn it over to the next management company. It's that simple.
Well, he might do that one, so...
That would be great. That would be wonderful. I would welcome that, and I think we could easily negotiate that situation. That's not what has happened. What has happened is he has continually come here or sent messages to us. As Mr. Wallace noted, he hasn't been to the table in every year, but it's always requesting money. So, that, to me, is not him being willing to back out of something that he got himself into, and now he doesn't want in. He sees dollar signs that are available to him potentially, and now using hostile tactics and, and abuse of the residents to try to negotiate a financial platform with the commission. I mean, it's really ingenious. What do you say?
I think we need to be a little careful with our rhetoric, too. I think that...
Find something I said that's not true.
I think we need to be more not so confrontational, as we need to try to find areas of agreement and move from there. I think we need to move on. Michael's here.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. Update on our two bridge projects. OS eighty-seven, they did not get any guard rail work done last week due to the weather. And I'm guessing that they probably will not achieve much this week either, um, based on the weather also. Uh, OS one-oh-five, we should be getting it opened up today. We got our guard rail in, and that's all we are lacking there, so we should be moving forward on that.
Do you have any idea what your total investment was there on that project?
I have not filled that, figured that, yeah. I can...
Oh, wait, it's not open to the public, though. Is it still barricaded?
That's correct, until the guard rail gets in place.
Okay.
And you're asking about one-oh-five, the bridge we build. Is that correct, Alexis?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the other one's under contract, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we won't have final numbers on that for overrun or underrun until it's completed, so...
I just wondered what our original guess was as to what we had to put into the one-oh-five project, and then what it ended up costing.
Okay. Um, and last week, I'd mentioned I was gonna get some numbers together, or not some numbers, but some locations and types of projects that we could benefit by having an excavator, so... And this is just a, a quick list rundown. You know, this isn't absolutely everything that we have. It's just some stuff that's on the list that we need to do, so, and a few others, but... We do have two locations where we're looking to remove actual bridges and just put in a corrugated metal pipe, which will benefit us in several ways. The greatest is not having to deal with paying for bridge inspections and it being on the... The greatest is not having to deal with paying for bridge inspections and it being on the register as a bridge, so.
Have you ever seen any of the other counties, like their master plan for their roads and bridge department?
Oh, not that I'm aware of, no.
You know, last week we were talking about fixing some of these shorter bridge span bridges, Michael, and we were down at a commissioner conference last week, Alexis and I were. And I talked to some of the different commissioners in different counties, even like Mitchell County. They've been using like a railroad cars. Have you ever heard of that?
Yeah, we've been using them.
Have you have too? Okay. I didn't know we did that. I was wondering. Cause they've been using some of them from, I guess you get them from Oklahoma somewhere.
Yes.
Stillwater. Oh, okay, very good. Cause I was gonna, I talked to you about doing that, cause they said, they said, they was gonna deal with Jewel County on a bridge, and they said they were gonna do half of it. Asked Jewel County to pay half, like a hundred thousand. And Jewel says, oh, we're just gonna put one of them railroad cars in there for like twenty thousand. And they, and they said that's what they've been doing. So, okay, good.
Yeah, we've done several of them up in the northwest.
How's that work for you? Pretty good?
It works great.
Good, okay.
You know, and right now, our, our biggest downfall with doing that is the fact that we're renting a crane to offload them. You know, it's not a exorbitant expense, but you know, it's, it starts adding up. We potentially use it a little bit more often because getting everybody on the same page. You're getting the crane and the tanks and everything there on a day in which the weather's gonna be.
Right, you gotta have all that organized together.
You know, I, I believe that if we got us an excavator and it's actually on here, that we could use that to assist with removing and installing the tank cars without having to rent a crane. And on that same note, those tank cars, they do work great. Right now, they're, they kinda have a monopoly on it. As far as I know, it's the only place in the U.S. to get them, and it's relatively close to us. But I am working with a semi-local company to see if we can start making some ourselves. Not ourselves, but there, and if they can be competitive in price and everything else. So, I'm working on that right now and hoping we can make some progress. And never know, we might be able to get a galvanized one cheaper than what we can get one hauled in out of Oklahoma. So, you know, I, I, I think those things have worked out great for us where we've used them, and I have several more locations where I'd like to.
All right, good.
Put them into place.
About for Dave Bell's area, is that too big an area there?
Um, I didn't bring the numbers with me. Tanner got back to me on that. And if I remember right, it would probably take two full cars in that location to meet a four-year storm. So, and a four-year storm is, you know, just the occurrence of the road top on average is gonna occur every four years.
Okay.
You know, but we're looking at some options on that, too.
Sounds good.
So. Uh, we've moved some gravel around here in the past, and then some of this lightest gravel we put down did get a little slimy with some of this rain we're having. So, we're putting a little bit on as a top coat, some sand from our sand pit that we stockpiled to assist with taking some of that slickness out of it.
I would commend the guys at Barnard for their work.
Yeah.
Did a good job with the bad weather, but the people were pleased that they could get to the cemetery fairly easy. Good deal. It was a very large crowd. And the road, I thought, stood up fairly well compared to what it was a couple of days before that when we went out to mark the graves.
The four-year storm, you were talking about, what, I, we talked about longer periods of time than that. Where does that number come from?
Uh, based on the hydraulics. They run the hydraulics based on the acres that flow through there and the size of the structure that you're putting in and whatnot. It's not a number I come up with. That comes from the engineering side. They run the hydrology.
So Tanner did that for that specific area already?
Yeah. You know, we can't, we can't start speculating what size we're gonna do unless we know how much water's gotta pass through there. You know, and I don't, by looking at it, it's obvious that a, a four-year storm, the channel itself probably can't handle it cause the trees and everything have shrunk it down to what its original size originally was, so. It's gonna be a place that's gonna flood no matter what, and it, it has flooded numerous times. And it will again.
And then it depends a lot on what's being done upstream to, to channel the water and how fast they're channeling the water towards that place. Cause it's just like building terraces or waterways. I mean, you know, they look at how much rain normally falls, how fast it falls, and then.
I mean, is there a soil conservation type issue there, though? I mean, I know that if it's not kept up over a certain period of time, maybe that contributes to the washouts and.
Yeah, it, it does. I mean, I mean, every, if you let the trees grow up in the channel, yeah, it eventually makes the water, water goes where the lowest places, I guess, is what you say. It goes where, it doesn't, you can't really regulate it. You regulate it by making the lowest place.
We constantly try to control by the nature.
That's right.
And we can't one-hundred percent favor. It's just impossible. You know, we, we do the best with what we can, but, you know, we run into issues all over the entire county where, you know, and not to be rude or anything, but you know, there's a lot of waterways that get silted in over time that we would benefit as a road department if the landowners were able to get those cleaned up, if they were able to keep their terraces built. We'd be able to benefit from that also. And, and, you know, there's some locations where we'd have been better off if they never would have built terraces. You know, cause then they're channeling water to somewhere that we were not designed to catch that water.
And more water.
And more water, yeah. You know, you might have a pond that fails, and landowner might not wanna rebuild it. You know, we're faced with that right now. And that's one of those locations that I think in due time, we're gonna have to put in probably two of those tankers at that location, just because here or that. I don't know if the county would be interested in NRCS and everybody work together. You know, for the county, it'd probably be cheaper if we helped rebuild it. But in the end of the day, if the, the rodent problem on that piece of property isn't taken care of, rebuilding the dam's gonna not solve it. It's just gonna delay it until it happens again. So, you know, there's a lot of things we gotta look at that come from another place.
Have you notified the vendors from last week's contract acceptance? Okay. And this was just given to me. I don't, this, this looks like what they gave us. But Great Bend Co-op for, you got their bulk blubber kind of pricing, right?
Correct.
This looks like it's total on there. I don't know. It just came from Don's office. Does that look any different to you?
I don't believe so. Not at a glance. It looks like the exact same thing that I provided you guys last week.
Did you bring pricing for the track excavator you were talking about?
I have not. It, it will take him, I'm sure, several weeks to come up with something. The vendors that we use for equipment. I mean, we can look online.
That's for new, though, right?
No, I'm looking for used.
You're looking for that.
Certified used, you know. I, I think that would, you know, I asked for a price on new also as a comparison. But, you know, I, I think ultimately that we could use used.
Is that, does that give government discounts on that used?
Not really. That, that's something that comes from.
That's why we need to be sure we look at the new price, because sometimes that government discount is so steep that it would pay us to.
Warranties and everything else, it can start adding up. That's correct. But we'll try to look at it both ways.
Yeah, yeah.
I got some more phone calls to get placed and whatnot yet on that also. I haven't got it all done yet.
Who do you probably deal with on most of those heavy equipment portfolios and Carrico for?
No.
That meant to.
Carrico's is ag. It'd be Murphy Equipment for John Deere.
For John Deere, no. Carrico doesn't do any commercial.
No. And then Berry Equipment for Komatsu.
And Foley for Cat?
And Foley for Cat, yes, sir.
Foley work with you pretty good?
Yeah. They all do for the most part. You know, it's a, a regional thing, you know. The closer you are to your dealer, I think, the better your service. It makes a huge difference.
Did you have anything else?
Um, not except for a, uh, executive session to continue on with what was discussed last week.
Did we, what about that job description for a road supervisor? Have we done anything yet?
I have not, yeah. I.
If we did, you could do that before exec, but this is a temporary. Concerning an employee moving to temporary supervisor.
That's correct.
Moved to recess and to executive session for five minutes to discuss an employee salary adjustment pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three one nine two B one to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel with the board. With the board, Director of Public Work, Clerk Don Harlow. For ten minutes?
I believe five would be good.
Five minutes, for five minutes. We will reconvene in the basement room of the courthouse. Do I leave anything out, Don?
No.
Thank you. Sure you note that on my grade card.
Pretty good there. Gotta be an attorney to be able to go to executive session, don't it?
I have a motion. I made a motion.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to a turn to executive session. Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, motion through. I would like to amend the, the motion to, to discuss, that it should be to discuss an inquiry of employee activity, not money, though. An amendment to your motion for executive session.
Or just employee. Maybe we should just use employee.
That's fine. Just to take.
Take out the money part, Don, please. Can you do that?
I think we need, you need to amend, I think we need to amend.
Amend my motion?
I believe so.
But we've already had it done.
Well, and I did, right, but we went into session and didn't.
We didn't get to our help yet. I'm sorry.
That's all right. But that, I mean, the, the portion, this is executive session. The portion about the finances is not, so. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but, but I guess.
Unless you needed further explanation about someone's personal information.
Read the motion, Don, please.
I had that you moved to recess and executive session to discuss an employee salary adjustment.
See what I'm saying? But the executive session was actually about.
The employee instead.
The employee, right. That's my concern.
So, I would move that the motion be corrected to indicate that we talked about the employee and not the salary.
Employee activity.
Activity of the employee.
Right.
Reader?
I'll second that.
All those in favor to amend the mo, the, amend the original motion, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Thank you. I just feel like that's more appropriate.
Alexis is pointing that out and thinking about that.
So now, if we're going to discuss money, then it's open session?
If employee, what was the?
Activity.
Activity, thank you.
How much did we, last summer, do?
I believe it was one dollar.
One dollar is what you asked for. Who seconded that? I'm sorry.
Randy.
Oh, yeah.
Are you, you're still making that recommendation?
I recommend for temporary wage adjustments until we get a full-time position.
I know that last time, Mr. Wallace had suggested that you look into any and all options that you have within the department. And I'm still gonna ask the same question as to why this particular person was chosen according to their, what qualifications, or what experience, or.
Well, first of all.
What justification?
First of all, after we were short of individual, we had a meeting, and I had an individual volunteer to step up. And as temporary, and I have utilized him since then, and I've been satisfied with the work that he's helped me get done.
My question is, are you, do you feel that, that you could use from the area that he was, that you're removing him from that area somewhat? Is that probably the best area in your department that you feel that you could remove someone and still accomplish the tasks that need to be done?
In a roundabout way, yes. You know, it's, it's the only area in which I have more than one person, and I happen to have three there. Is it gonna affect it some? Yes, it will. But is it going to be affecting an entire blade route?
Yeah.
No. So, you see where I'm coming from.
Work will not stop. It will only slow to some extent.
Yes.
And at times that he is not needed in this other position, he could.
He, he has.
Feel back, go back, supervise and do some things.
Yes.
I am of the mindset that we need to be actively seeking employment. We don't have an ad out yet. We haven't re, we haven't redesigned the job description. I would like to see all of that happen. Someone volunteering their time to do a little more than they normally do, or to do something different than they normally do, I commend that. I'm still, I still haven't been told, other than the fact that this individual is willing to volunteer, I still haven't been told what the credentials are, or, or why, what the justification is, why that's applicable to this particular position. I mean, what are the credentials there that this, this person knows more about that, or has the management skills, or can you elaborate?
Well, not too much, I guess. You know, at the end of the day, you got somebody that's gonna step up, and number two, he's getting stuff done, you know? He's, he's working with everybody, and it seems to be working good. You know? Does he have a college degree in management? I don't believe so. You know, I don't know what that is. You know, but experience and work ethic and all that stuff, I think plays in very important.
Do the other employees get along well with him?
You know, for the most part. There might be a few that do not, but you know, there's also people that just flat don't like being told what to do sometimes. And sometimes people need told what to do. So.
Well, I, I, I really think we need to work on actively seeking.
I agree.
The.
And I got some work I gotta get done on my end when I get free up to do that, yes.
Yeah. If you would just make any edits that you can, even if you wrote on the job description and scanned it in, you can email it to me. And I have it where I can PDF and change it and then bring it to the board.
I have no problem in following Michael's recommendation. I think, I do think it's important that this board validate his decision, though. And that's why I would be in favor of doing it. And I have no reason that to say no.
My reason to say no is that we haven't finished the evaluations yet, and I think that needs to be part of the discussion. There were quite a few comments in the evaluations that I think would come into play as far as how the structure should be set up and or reined in, however you want to identify the problems there.
I think that probably needs to be addressed more when we look for a permanent solution, not a temporary.
I understand what you're saying, but you're also saying that you've just had someone volunteer who you personally like and can't think of any other qualifications to go along with the recommendation. So that is a little concerning to me in a two-million-dollar department with twenty-five employees.
That's temporary, right?
Yes, certainly, yes.
So. So, if it was full-time for, you know, permanent, that'd be different.
I'll move. Boy, Jesse Zachal had a dollar to his wages to act as Michael's.
Interim road and bridge supervisor.
Interim road and bridge supervisor.
You said this is gonna be temporary, so, and if we get a higher new road supervisor, then that goes away?
Yes, this is temporary.
I'll second that.
Are we going to put a time limit on this, a timeframe? I mean, I'm, I'm a little concerned that what we did to the last employee who got this position, it was not discussed, it wasn't, basically, we had a recommendation.
I can admit my motion to do that.
I'm asking in the discussion if there's going to be a time limit on it.
Requested it be retroactive from when he started to since March 18th.
I agree. Let's vote the motion down.
All those in favor of the motion as made, right, you're not making any amendments?
Yeah.
Vote aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, you want it to be retroactive until when?
March 18th.
March 18th. When did the pay period start, Don?
It'd be March 26th. And we can, I mean, I can go back to that day if that's what, what the motion is, I just have to know what the motion is.
Well, I'll rethink this a little bit. I move that we deploy Jesse Zachal on a temporary, what was that?
Interim road and bridge supervisor.
Until the first of August? Starting at the April pay period. Now, is that everything we think, let's just, you get it?
You have it. Timeframe and then time set.
Weren't until filled.
No. Until, we will revisit it, we will revisit it.
If we fill prior dollars first.
Yeah, until filled or August 1st, when we revisit. Yes, yes, add that.
Did you put the dollar in there?
A dollar, yes.
Okay, it has been moved, oh.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded to employee. Yeah, would you like to read it back, please?
Hang on.
Sure.
Can I just put it in wherever I want to?
Sure.
Yeah, that's what the motion is, I'm not. Okay. Okay, this is my motion that I'm typing out. Move to grant Jesse Zachal a one dollar per hour merit increase on a temporary basis as, as an interim road and bridge supervisor through the first of August or until position is built, starting on April, starting with the April time period, seconded by Randy.
Is it a merit increase? That's my only question to the matter.
No, it's not a merit.
How about we put a increase?
A increase, no, it's not a merit.
Temporary basis is through the first of August or until the position is built. If sooner than August 1st?
Well, yeah, until if it's built.
I think that's assumed.
Okay.
I think that's assumed. Motion as read has been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? I would suggest that as a supervisor of a $2 million budget, that you should bring in someone with your suggestions, credentials, on paper for us to look at, to assess, to see something, and make a decision based on something that's visual and front of us, and not just an opinion because that was the first person who volunteered. So, that being said, all those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else for the board?
Oh, I just, we talked, we were gonna ask how the dozer doing that, running the water.
Yes, thank you.
It should be going in the shop here directly. It's been at the shop, but they were not able to do any physical work to it until the insurance was fine with the way things are gonna be handled. And it looks like that all the fluids have checked out with outwater in them, except for the transmission. And since the transmission took on water, Caterpillar recommended removing and basically going through the transmission to get all the water out of those valves and clutch packs and all that stuff. And insurance has agreed and is satisfied with what's there, and if there's any problems related in the future due to this, that insurance is also aware of that.
Hopefully it'll be fixed and be okay, huh?
Yeah. You know, it's still a fairly new machine, and it's the right way to take care of it, so.
I have one more thing, I had a request on the golf course road out there, the pothole.
Yes.
Somebody suggested, I'll just pass that along, it's no big deal, but.
Hopefully we can get that taken care of here, hopefully even today, I'm hoping. You know, but it helps with a little bit of sunshine. We purchased some material that I don't think would have been suitable for this time of year, so we went and got some stuff that's a little bit better.
Thanks.
And we got several holes around the county, we're gonna try to get them patched here.
Okay.
Anything else?
Randy and I had talked last week, I believe it was last week, about the mobile 311 and starting to initiate using that. Is that something that your new appointed assistant can help you facilitate?
Possibility. I don't know, I, I think that we need to call in the company themselves and do some in-house training directly from them. So.
How soon could they do that?
I don't know, I haven't contacted them yet.
Would we have to pay extra for them to do that training?
I do not know, I have not contacted them about that.
As an example, I think that would be the perfect way that you could approach something like, you know, you bring us a list of what you want to use an excavator on, and you could even have that highlighted on the map and show us where, you know, we move it to this quadrant. We have six jobs right here in this township that this particular piece of equipment can do. We have three jobs in this township that it can do. I mean, I think you're, you're missing out on being able to help yourself organize and have some better logistical capabilities without, by not using that.
Yeah, this list, I agree, this list like you just made here, which is good, that justifies why you want an excavator. The 311 could point out places where, oh, that needs fixed, this needs, you know, it'd just be a helper to you, I think.
Well, and show locations, I mean, you can, you can see where you have dense areas of particular need.
Because you have a lot on your plate, and if you could have a base of data that, you, you might forget something welded. So whether you have a list, that says, oh, okay, I gotta do this, this, and this, you know, I think it'd be helpful for you.
Right.
Maybe not, I don't know.
I don't doubt that it could be, it's just everything in the right place.
I know it's extra work.
It's not really extra work though, because they're already writing things down on paper.
Yeah, but to implement it would be some work, but, but in the long run, it'd benefit you, I think.
It's just one of the people that's been using this.
Well, we have the stuff.
He might have used it some in the very beginning. As far as a desktop version, I don't believe so.
Are we going to give any more consideration to the community-formed committee idea, where people would help input that type of information and be informed by regions? If there were people that are interested, I mean, we have farmers that travel the same roads, day in and day out, seasonally, and/or all year. We have mail route carriers.
Yeah, well, I was, when I was there, I was talking to Lee Ann about to give the highway department, because we're, you know exactly where, you could write down pothole, bad gravel, so forth, and, you know.
Right.
I, I don't have nothing against that.
I was actually told in, when we were in one of our sessions, it might have been the HR session that we listened to, that when they, this was for Geary County specifically, I know, but more common practice than what I think we, we would assume. When they were hiring for positions like road supervisor, et cetera, they would bring in a panel and make it some various positions, whereas a mail carrier might have a lot to say about road maintenance, because they're out there a lot.
Yeah, they're out there every day.
Where the problem issue, yeah, where the problems are, what type of issues they are. It was, it was an interesting concept, so I thought we could maybe discuss utilizing some citizenry input, which would be helpful.
Well, he gets calls from farmers all the time telling you, you got a problem, right? So I think we already have that going on, just not a formally.
Well, in an organized way, right?
An organized, yeah.
For example, someone, I know my phone's cracked, but if you can see that picture.
Yeah.
You can see, can you see that? So, you have basically a built-up windrow that is kind of just thicker in that one particular area, and the water has accumulated up against the windrow and sitting on the road. What are you going to say to that operator about that?
Kind of looks like a large windrow, I don't know if he did clipping edges or what there, but, you know, it does happen. It's nice if we had the time to.
Well, I realize you want some little bit of windrow there, because you want to keep the gravel. And not, because we don't want to push gravel in a ditch, but, but I don't know if you can level it off to make it so you have a, you know, a crown. But you're probably gonna have some gravel on the edges of the road, but if you get too much, then we create a lake in the middle of the road.
Well, that's kind of what's happening here, you can see, it's just pooling, and you can kind of see where that darker dirt is showing through there on the, on the other side of the road. So, again, what would be your recommendation to this operator?
Well, it depends on the location, I don't know all the details behind it, you know, because it looks like a large windrow, that's not how we typically do it. So I'm assuming he clipped edges, and as time goes by, that windrow is gonna diminish as he's going along here. And, you know, it'd be nice if you didn't have any windrow at all, it would be awesome. But if you don't have a windrow, then you're constantly always cutting. And if you're always cutting, you're gonna lose all your material at the edge of your road. You know, it, you gotta have material to move across the road, and if, like I said, if you're always cutting, you're gonna be losing all your material at the edges of your road.
So you wouldn't say anything?
I would have to view it and visit with them on what needs to be done different, you know? At times, we have had to go out and we'll scoop through those locations, you know, you can't eliminate not having a windrow. You know, and there's many times that the water will pass through a windrow, you know, that it's not packed down, that it's able to make a path through there and drain out on its own. You know, at the bottom of every hill, there's gonna be a windrow, and there's gonna be a little bit of a valley, especially if there's crown on the road, in which there's water to be held there. You know, in, in a perfect world, it would be excellent if the person could stop at the bottom of every hill, get their shovel out, and scoop a section of that windrow away, so the water can freely pass through there.
Drain out, yeah, I know it.
But I just do not see that we have the time to be able to do that.
Sometimes I think people can do it while they are complaining about it myself. Stopped several times on routes. Just took my shovel and let the water out of the road.
I've done it many, many, many times myself.
It's kind of like this evergreen tree that's three foot high growing in the greater ditch and complaining to the county, "Bye, cut the thing down, it won't hurt you."
Yeah, on the same token, we're constantly telling people that it's a liability, and we can't accept it. I had suggested, no, you can say that now, but I had suggested two years ago to have people help cut trees and clear the, the shared right-of-way, and it was completely not acceptable then.
Well, they got sued by them.
Well, if they're large.
No, that was our county going in and cutting their trees.
We didn't cut any trees.
Moving trees, I'm sorry, were you not on the property, were you on that property?
What?
You just said it wasn't cutting trees.
We didn't cut the trees, no.
You moved the trees.
We moved the trees, yes, ma'am.
Anyway, that's all we're, right?
Okay. So, I guess my concern is what the protocol is. You're telling me that you don't have a suggestion for that, other than being able to look at each individual spot? That's a little concerning. Don, is it next week that we have on the agenda for the rest of the highway department evaluations?
We do not, because I actually think that it was supposed to have been the 29th, and I forgot to do it.
Okay, let's add that, please. Unless you think we have a lot going on that, well, I mean, we'll have to just fit it in regardless, it needs to get done. And then who, who would we be missing after that? If we do the highway department?
You guys need to do your department heads, you need to do Jean Paul.
Okay.
I'm not sure who's supposed to do the recycling center, honestly.
Okay. Would you please make?
We have to figure out the ambulance, who's gonna do the ambulance?
Okay.
Because I think that he felt like he should not do the ambulance until he had the turn, turn that.
Okay. Let's set aside a time. Michael, are you planning on 11 o'clock next week?
Yeah. Be fine.
So, would you be able to stay through to noon? That way you could do, we could do, how many do we have left though? We have about half of them, and did we use it 45 minutes last time? I think 45 minutes to an hour, we did half.
I'm not sure you got halfway through. They have more at the end of the alphabet, some may have to begin.
Okay, so, let's just plan on starting at 11, and don't schedule anyone till 12:30 then if you have to fit someone in after us, how about that? That'll give us time to do open session and the evaluations next week, finish those up. Anything else?
I don't have any, I have to go.
All right, thank you, Michael.
Thank you, you guys have a great weekend.
I just have two things before you go back to the inner scene. Truest contract, well, three things, here's truest contract that will be by resolution, wet fund recommendations. And then, with everything, I forgot to advertise mowing the cemeteries, I think we had decided last year. Eh, yeah. And so somebody's already came in and asked, were we bidding that? I'm not sure there's enough time to bid and get everything done, unless I call everybody up, but I may miss somebody.
The person that asked, the person that did it last year?
No.
So let's at least approach both of those people, the person who did it last year and this person who's inquiring now.
Okay.
And ask them to give us a bid.
How about I call the people that I know mow, and then if you guys know of anybody that mows, they can submit a bid, and we'll try to get bids in by Monday.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just, I thought I actually had that as a reminder in January, but that was my intentions, was to start advertising that in January.
What are, what, what is the, what are the details of the mowing bid that we?
I can email you what we normally add, or put in.
The add, what the add is?
Yeah, and normally it's to come and get the map of the, and then I give them the townships that you put there in. But I will email you guys, or actually, I'll print it off and have it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry about that, I've just had too many other things that I guess are more important.
Yes, yes, there's been a lot. Okay. The contract for property reappraisal The contract for property reappraisal is dated for today. But I think the other one doesn't expire until the end of the month.
Yeah, true, McQueen.
Right, whatever day you do it on is.
We'll just be extending the old, yeah, basically.
All work will be done in accordance to property valuation guidelines with consultant performing all duties, duties with the exception of data entry and sales verification. This contract is to cover appraisal years twenty twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. This contract will run for three years, commencing June first, two thousand nineteen, and ending May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. If at any time requirements for reappraisal are modified substantially by property value, valuation department, the contract can be renegotiated to reflect these changes. In consideration of the consultant furnishing the county the services contracted for herein, and such services being acceptable to the county, the consultant shall receive from the county the sum of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars per appraisal year to be paid in accordance with the terms of this contract. Consultant shall be responsible for his own workers' compensation insurance, if any, and will not hold the county liable for any damages which might occur while performing services as required by this contract. Consultant understands and acknowledges herein that he is not eligible for the Workers' Compensation Act and any policy issued on behalf of the county, as he is not an employee of the county, and declines any coverage through this contract. The parties hereto have caused this, caused this document to be executed on the sixth day of May, two thousand nineteen. I guess it doesn't say, well, proposes to perform the required service for the reappraisal of all properties in Lincoln County according to the provisions and specifications as set forth in the Kansas statutes annotated, and all rules and regulations as specified by the Kansas Department of Revenue and all subdivisions thereof, whether or not they are herein contained, there we go, or made part hereof by attachment hereto or reference herein contained. And I think she said the end of May, so we don't necessarily have to run up today.
We just won't take the fact until we do that.
Right. I think it's June first.
Move, we adopt resolution two thousand nineteen ten.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Um, I would like to know a little bit more about the other arrangements that he has. I think it's interesting, if he is, if there's a breakdown of his different duties, like one he called the final review, he does not do in Rice County, but he does do here. I mean, if that's something that Rhonda can do, we might need to figure out what she is or is not capable of doing. I mean, I'm, I, it looks to me as if they've just set it up this way, and it's habitually performed as a, basically a tradition. I mean, if he has these other, it's interesting to me that it is not the same in any of the three counties that he's working for. I find that interesting. And as the county appraiser, he is doing part of the reappraisal process in Ottawa County, which ours does not. So that's interesting to me, too. So it's worth talking.
I think every county's different. Aren't there any way to handle that?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we're, we're contracting him to do the whole thing for twenty-nine thousand, six hundred, but he's saying in his county, he does portions of the reappraisal, and then they contract out some of the other things, like the data entry, et cetera.
Right.
Another, both of those other counties he works for has a mapping, um, contract for eleven thousand dollars to do all the mapping for the whole, throughout the whole year. We pay, uh, an entire position to do that. So that should be looked at, as far as, you know, what's flexible in the budget.
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded for resolution two thousand nineteen ten to be adopted. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. And not opposed. Sure. Okay.
We gotta sign that right now.
Um, web disbursements from April two thousand nineteen. Salt Creek four H Club, eighteen hundred dollars. Vesper Men's Club, two thousand dollars. OCCK, eight hundred dollars. City of Beverly, um, fifteen hundred dollars. American Legion Post three fifty-nine, three thousand dollars. Lincoln El- Elementary School, five thousand, five hundred, and USD two ninety-eight, seven hundred and fifty-nine. So this is the request from the web fund for the commissioners to approve their, to put their stamp of approval on what they've already approved. At the April two thousand nineteen meeting of the web fund committee, the attached applications were approved for funding. The applicants have been notified and grant agreements have been signed and returned. We hope you will concur with us that these projects are worthy of funding and that you will approve these requests. I have seen all these, if you guys would like to look at them. That, I gave you the summary of the dollar amounts and the organizations, but their full applications are in there for your review.
Is that the entire amount of money to be dispersed or shipped?
No, there would still be seventeen thousand left.
Seventeen?
I'm, I'm right around there. Don't take that number. I mean, it's, it's right around seventeen, from what we talked about at the meeting. Seventeen left for the year, so two more disbursements potentially at the quarters. Was that it, Dawn? Just in that and this contract that you gave? Okay.
Did you sign that, Alexis?
I did, thank you. And we have, let's see. I bet David signed this. Yes, he did. From David Gersman, a note to the Lincoln County Commission, and he has attached the Kansas statute nineteen forty-six oh six, which I'll read first. Same tax levy, increased bonds, use of perceived locations. A, the commission, or in case of an elected board, the board may annually levy a tax for the purpose of operating, maintaining, equipping, and improving any hospital managed and controlled under the provisions of this act, and for the purpose of paying a portion of the principal interest on bonds issued under the authority of KSA twelve seven seventy-four, and amendments thereto. Um, the commission, or in this case, or in the case of an elected board, may levy such a tax in an amount not to exceed six mils in any year without an election as provided in subsection C. And such tax shall not be subject to or within any aggregate tax levy limit prescribed by law. In the event of the commission or board, or the board proposes to levy such tax in the amount which exceeds two mils, but is less than six mils in any year, such propositions shall be, shall be published. And it goes on about some of the details of the vote and the percentage of electors, et cetera, et cetera. After the hospital's been established, commission may issue additional general obligation bonds for the purposes in which we have. The commission, and in the case of, or in the case of elected board, shall not levy any tax exceeding six mils under authority of subsection. So regarding KSA nineteen forty-six oh seven, and he has C particularly, which is such tax shall not be subject to or within any aggr- uh, aggregate tax levy limit prescribed by law. This year, the commission must follow state law with respect to how it levies a tax for Lincoln County Hospital. Please carefully follow this hospital budgeting statute, section KSA's nineteen forty-six oh seven C, this year, and consult with an attorney immediately while there is still time to comply with it. Inform your hospital trustees so they submit a proper budget in time so you can do this important statutory duty. Let me be clear, if you levy a tax again to support any shortfall in their hospital budget without knowing what the total hospital budget is and what the shortfall really is, and deny the public its right to know, you will be violating an important state law designed to protect taxpayers. You can be recalled if you violate any state law. To comply with this statute and do so honorably and in the spirit of it, as the legislature, legislature has in mind, there's a lot of work for the trustees and the commission to do and not much time to do it. The hospital budget is bigger than every other non-elected-run department budget in the county and deserves a lot more of your time than the commission has spent on it in the past. To disregard this important statutory responsibility is a slap in the face of taxpayers who deserve better. I hope you do what is required, as there are remedies for voters and taxpayers to find relief under the law, protest, and recall if you don't do your job properly this year. I have read attorney general opinions that I believe state that the procedures kept in force by the state legislature that apply to tax levies, which the court generally views favorable to being productive with taxpayers, are not affected by the tax lib revocations, unless the legislature specifically exempts those specific procedures when it enacts exemptions for the county from tax lists. The sooner you receive, review, and understand the hospital budget in its entirety and follow the process the legislature, legislature expects for a county-established hospital, the sooner you will be prepared to answer questions from the public, which will surely begin as I continue to open up the business affairs and business contact of our county-established hospital. I assume you all recall what the public did when the LCCA lost in its effort to conceal its financial conduct. It is not my fault that the information that was revealed was not pretty. The similarities I have found between the conduct of the hospital trustees and their administrator is very similar to my experience with the LCCA, but worse. For example, the budget that was concealed from, from Mr. Lowman and withheld from me for weeks, slow-walking my Cora request is insufficient, in my opinion, to satisfy the technical requirements of nineteen forty-six oh seven. It is, in my, it is my opinion, it does not accurately represent the first required budgetary amount that it will take to operate, equip, maintain, and improve the hospital as the statute requires. And it certainly does not show the amount of, of portion, the amount of the portion thereof they deem is necessary for you to levy a tax to support the shortfall. Being the county hospital by itself does not entitle it to an automatic ten mil levy as previous commissioners may have assumed. Please inform the trustees what you expect for a budget, so Mr. Granzo, his accountant, and the trustees can give you a budget that you and the public, through Coma and Cora, will see and see clearly. If those two amounts are not clear and do not balance, I believe you will be doing a great disservice to the taxpayers, and there may be legal recourse if you blindly write them another large six-figure check. Please also insist the hospital trustees include their expected starting cash balances from the prior year, since Mr. Granzo already suggested to Mr. Lowman that two new doctor hires will be funded from those operating reserves until the new reserves, I assume he hopes may blossom, spin up. That's clearly part of the budget that must be included to determine the shortfall necessary to be funded by the tax levy, and if it's left out, my opinion is you will be defrauding voters. I believe it is perfectly acceptable to have a budget amount called operating reserve that is used for cash flow in unforeseen situations, as up to ninety percent of their income comes from voluntary sources and is never guaranteed. But the budget must show all planned expenses. Claiming a shortfall for a portion of which there is no shortfall because you are using operating funds, in part you received from previous mil levy taxes, would have the same stink it did when the public found out that the LCCA was doing it with their mil levy allocations, as far as holdovers, and the operating account and cash on hand by the hospital had exceeded a million dollars in private years, prior years. Nothing in the hospital finances is supposed to be private, except intimate, personal details about employees, contractors, and patients, and under the Cora, if there isn't a provision of law for closing the record, the public has a right to know. I have pending Cora requests, which I believe will include their employment or contractor agreements for the ER and clinic doctors and compensation amounts. I hope the trustees, Mr. Granzo and the commission, are prepared to soon defend Mr. Granzo's decisions about setting compensation levels for himself and other administrators and doctors, and decisions to staff the ER and not require even newly hired doctors to pull any on-call shifts for ER, which I believe only sees an average of around three patients per day from previous statements made at hospital board meetings. I am well aware that the trustees vote to approve many of his decisions, but ultimately they are responsible for the operation and management of the hospital. They are not only an advisory board, they are not only an advisory board, which is ridiculous on its face. The trustees will have to defend what appears almost nil discussion to date on these matters when question, and when questions and fact-checking begins, and if the commission doesn't do it this year, the public will. I have only heard a single trustee raise the slightest objection or question to Mr. Granzo's major staffing and hiring decisions, and I could tell she was clearly afraid and walking on glass, thinking she couldn't reveal the compensation being paid or other details, which is public information for a county-established hospital. And if the hospital administration is trying to muzzle trustees from discussing financial matters with the public, I believe that is contrary to Cora and should not be permitted. These are public officials, and they should not be constrained from acting in the public interest and communicating with the public. I recommend having trustees, as well as Mr. Granzo, available for questions at upcoming commission meetings when the budget process begins, and I recommend scheduling some evening meetings for this purpose. I believe at least one trustee has information that the commission should hear, and others may come forward with useful information as well. I'm tired of the secretive one-on-one conversations that those who run our county choose to keep public details in the dark. Despite what some trustees, trustees may think, it is not a violation of their public office to discuss financial matters with anyone in the public unless it involves private, personal, patient information, or a very limited list of items in the Kansas Open Records Act. And if the hospital administration is forcing trustees to sign hush agreements limiting their ability to interact with the public as hospital trustees, the commission must put a stop to this at once. I believe one trustee has already made some stunning discoveries about how other nearby hospitals staff, how they staff their clinics and or ER departments at substantially lower costs than here in Lincoln. When she was chast, when she was chastised by other trustees for even thinking she had any role in oversight over their hired administrator, and this was in addition to considerable time, I believe, they spent trying to intimidate her with required hush agreements she needed to sign, some of which she was being asked to affidavit, she read and understood when she claimed she had never been, when she claimed they had never been provided to her. I still haven't received the agreements that were distributed, cited, and discussed at that open meeting. And while I still haven't filed any AG complaints against your hospital board, my patience is wearing thin, and I've lost count of all the Coma Cora violations I believe have occurred in just the last couple of months. With regards to the new hires and what, what may be a near-million-dollar increase in the budget for the clinics, it is unclear what happens if things don't spin up as intended, or how long we have for it to occur before those operating reserves dry up and the hospital and or county face a major shortfall. I believe this is why Mr. Lowman probably invested more board time asking questions about the budget with regards to the two newly hired doctors than the rest of the trustees combined at the meetings I attended. Thank you, Mr. Lowman, and I hope you ask a lot more questions before you approve their proposed budget. Finally, please take the opportunity being in charge of their budget, please take the opportunity of being in charge of their budget. You can solve a lot of problems in this county and save taxpayer money and increase the quality of care and amount of charity care if you stop being so willfully blind and letting the hospital budget run itself, as they've done for years, without any accountability to the commission or the public. The trustees report to you, you approve their budget. They are supposed to execute a budget approved by you, similar to any other non-elected county department or established entity. Because if they don't, you can indirectly control that approved budget by removing trustees who don't follow it and make it happen. You can hold them accountable to any approved budget by, excuse me, to any line item in that budget by approving it and making it clear trustees who don't act in good faith to execute that with their hired administrator will be gone. Letting people serve until they don't want to anymore is hardly following your sworn oath to do your duties as the legislature intended. You are supposed to lead, so please start leading and stop passing the literal buck in ways the legislature did not intend. If you hold the trustees accountable, they will hold their administrator accountable, and stop rubber-stamping virtue of everything you want them to approve and keeping the public in the dark. By the way, I do not understand why Mr. Granzo uses the title of CEO, and I believe he shouldn't use that title. This is not a statement on his fitness to be an administrator. He obviously has those qualifications. The issue is his title and the legal basis for which I believe there is none. I believe it's deceptive and incompatible with the statutory definition of his position. He is an administrator, and the term CEO implies power he does not have and should not have in that organization. They are not a corporation. Even their bylaws, which took me weeks to receive from the hospital, lays it clearly that he is the administrator and not a CEO. The trustees need to start treating him like one. He administrates their rules, policies, and any decisions they make for the hospital. Please require the trustees to force Mr. Granzo to change his title. I realize you only have indirect control over your trustees, but you can make your request clear, and if they ignore you, begin removing them. Otherwise, your authority to appoint and remove means nothing, and the entire appointment process is a joke and a facade. If you begin using the authority the legislature gave the commission, you can begin using the hospital as this circa seven-million-dollar-a-year organizational asset. It is the best in our county, and begin to solve other pressing problems that the legislature has given you the tools to solve. If you're going to approve or use your authority to modify or amend their budget, assuming they are unwilling or unable to do so themselves, if you had handed their budget back with the revision request this year, consider ma- consider making them budget monies to support nursing home and assisted living care. You can do this despite the excuses Mr. Granzo gave you for his negative view of consolidating the hospital and nursing home. Consider what that will cost combined. It may be substantially less expensive than continuing to subsidize both a hospital and a nursing home. If they will lose a little doing, lose a little money doing it, it may be cheaper than what it will cost to subsidize two completely separate institutions. We need long-term, sustainable solutions. Bailing out and buying out LPM is not a long-term solution. Does this commission really want to have two completely separate entities running nursing care and hospital services with a population of only around three thousand? Do you want to eventually find appointments for two board of trustees instead of just one? Do you really want to pay for completely duplicative administrative staffs, billing, and every other support service required to support two institutions that have a history of being seriously underutilized during the times of the year? Your appointees serve at your pleasure. They do not serve- They do not serve at their administrator's pleasure, but you wouldn't know it in the way they run their meetings. The problem is there is no direction coming from the commission or the trustees you appoint, except for maybe just one, and that seems recent. It all comes from Mr. Granzo. Please start running the hospital like it is your hospital and not to, and not his to run alone with the rubber stamp of the trustees and by your lack of action, the commission. I do not believe Mr. Granzo has fully considered all the shared resources overhead and administration that can be used for nursing, hospital, and clinic care. If they will need expansion for more residence rooms, float a revenue bond and do it. That may be less expensive over the long run than shelling out money to LPM and Mr. Grace and dumping endless amounts of money trying to keep that obsolete, out-of-code, old obsolete, out-of-code LPM facility going. And if you really want a nursing home service in Lincoln for another ten, twenty, or thirty years, you better start with something new and that meets today's codes, not the way the codes were in the fifties or the eighties. I believe the commission has already learned the danger of inviting outside corporate interests to help this county. If you're going to have to invest a couple million dollars or more over the next several years, invest it in the hospital and have a brand-new code-compliant annex to the hospital. Don't drop this money to buy out an outside corporation and the money pit of the old county-owned facility to keep it up to code. Consolidating nursing home services in the hospital budget may save the county considerable amounts of money over the years, and a new nursing home will, new nursing home wing will surely attract more patients and better utilize hospital staff, especially when acute-care patients are nowhere to be seen. It is insane to operate a hospital the way we do when sometimes there is barely one patient sleeping in the hospital and not seeing, and not seeing that they can, can and should be offering long-term care beds and not just swing beds in that organization. Please think big and use your authority over your hospital trustees and their authority over Mr. Granzo and do the right thing. Statutes not only don't prevent a county hospital from offering nursing care and related services, they permit the commission to consolidate other things. After you review nineteen forty-six oh seven with an attorney, I recommend looking over the statutes that permit the hospital to contract and run the ambulance EMS service, and even the statutes that give you authority to contract all the health department and board of health responsibilities to the county hospital as well as... Sorry, I'm gonna start that one over. I recommend looking over the statutes that permit the hospital to contract and run the ambulance EMS service, and even the statutes that give you the authority to contract all the health department, board of health responsibilities to the county hospital as well, which counties are sized and permitted to do. Sorry, shuttering a standalone health clinic and letting the hospital hire those county employees will lower the need for hospital to contract out for nursing, and they will capture those revenues, and they will get much better utilization of the county health department nurses and other caregivers. I believe Mr. Granzo may be making as much as administrators who run far larger hospitals, including those with nursing care beds. I intend to find this out along with other obtainable facts in the months to come. Either way, if he is unwilling or unable to work in a hospital that offers nursing care services or runs the ambulances or even the health department services, I'm confident the trustees can find someone who can at what I believe we are paying him. If the hospital consolidates these things, they can afford to hire an assistant administrator if necessary to help with these new responsibilities instead of having two or three separate directors. It can be done if you use your authority, begin asking the right questions and demanding better answer, answers to those questions than some of the answers I've heard in the past. Finally, help open up Lincoln County Hospital. Insist on the hospital publishing the names of their trustees and listing public contacts to trustees without having to go through Mr. Granzo, who is not a CEO, and without Mr. Granzo being able to act as a filter. It is simply unfair that people who are buddies with trustees may know how to reach them when the general public does not. This is unacceptable and needs to be changed. Your appointees are public officials and need to begin acting like them. They are not supposed to come, they are not some secret group keeping all hospital business and packets of public records concealed from the public as they have. They need to stop the BS with all the NDA secrecy agreements and pressure placed on trustees to keep their mouths shut and stop the intimidation about being removed from breaches of so-called confidential information I've seen applied to the one trustee willing to fact-check Mr. Granzo. Trustees for too long have believed their business is none of the public's business, and the Cora and coma are going to put an end to that. The commission representatives should not only be there to make sure they're executing the budget the commission approves, but keeping a heads-up on what each next-year budget is, so the commission and the public isn't surprised when the next deadline comes around. Commissioners who should ask questions and expect solid, commissioners who attend should ask questions and expect solid answers, as you have authority over the trustees through your ability to remove any of them that doesn't answer your questions to your satisfaction or maintains an administrator who does on their behalf.
So, I did ask at the Kansas Association of Counties, because some of this topic had come up. I went to the last hospital board meeting last month, and then there was some question on the, basically, the activity of the hospital board and then how the commission is related to the hospital board and what those relationships are, and while I think Mr. Gerson pointed out a lot of that connectivity, there's been some disconnect here with this commission. I believe that this commission has not been approving the hospital budget, because I have not, and that's been two budgets now for me. So, this is news to me as far as what my duty is, and I apologize for that. I should probably have known that or found that out sooner than now. I would like to see that we definitely follow through with this. I brought this question to the attorney who's hired by the Kansas Association of Counties. They have a new person now. It was a woman as, until last year at some point, and then in October of last year, I believe, they hired this new young guy of Topeka, and I had a conversation with him, and he said yes, that the county hospital is to bring their budget to the commission for approval. And so, it's my understanding that Lincoln County has not done that. Is that correct for the best of your knowledge, Dawn, since you've been here? Yeah, yeah. So, it will be interesting to see that. I think we need to follow through. I, I actually, we were not the only county. I actually asked that question to the attorney at the conference, because another commissioner and I were having this discussion, and I was bringing up some of these questions, and he said their county has not been approving their county hospital budget either. So, we went to the attorney together to have this discussion. He said, yes, you definitely do need to do that. It's required in the law, and the Geary County Commissioner, who was hosting the conference, said that they do do that yearly. Geary County does still have a county-owned hospital, and they do look at and approve and even amend the county hospital budget. So, that being said, one of my biggest surprises was to see that their budget is about seven million, which is, yeah, it's bigger than what the county is spending on all the services that we provide. Now, of course, a lot of that is self-generated revenue, so that, you know, it has a lot to do with the size of it, which is good. I mean, that's very, seems like a big number for three thousand in population to me. But we definitely need to consider what we're looking for or how we need to go about approving this budget or making recommendations for change, et cetera. Was there more behind that? More statutes?
Statutes.
Yeah.
You don't need to read them all. Well, I guess we're getting two doctors coming. Before long, I have heard that the lady doctor was got licensed here in Kansas, and I don't know about her husband yet. And at the last meeting I went to, I don't know if Mr. Serene announced that they were part of, weren't planning on or thinking about putting a new clinic in across the street to the southwest of the hospital. There's a lot there, I guess.
I heard that the, some, that the lot has been donated. I don't know if that's true.
That's what I heard at the meeting. Are they, I don't know, that's what I heard, and so, I don't know if the board's wanting about it. We might work on getting a new clinic there, and I don't know. Well, that's gonna be funded either, or, and we have the old clinic. What are we gonna do with it? I guess they'd keep it too. So, that's, I don't know, speaking to hospital board here, that's when I was at the last meeting. I guess I never did update you guys, update you guys.
Well, I came to that one. I guess we did.
You came.
I, I came and I listened.
You were there. Did you hear that part? I don't think you were there.
No, I, I did. I was late.
So, they, you know, I have a fear, worries too about the hospital budget being expensive. Again, I want a hospital for Lincoln too, but all comes down to money, you know?
Well, I think.
And they're, and we are, we're at a loss on our budget every year up there, and how can you, how long can we go on doing that, you know?
What's interesting is that through some of this information and what I just read from Mr. Gerson, the expected loss that they're pre-calculating for this year is to be covered by cash reserves from last year, which means the county has been giving upwards of half a million dollars when there may be more than that in their cash reserves. So, we're taxing the people to put money toward the hospital that they then hadn't, and I know you have to have operating capital available at the beginning of your year, but I think the question is how much and, and what are the new expenses to which you're assigning the funds that you know you've already rolled over from last year? Does that make sense? I think for us, that's the question as the commission. If we're going to be subsidizing the operation, you want to know what the subsidy's for. If they're going from one doctor to three, what is the increase that we're incurring? And is the county, you know, I mean, there's a lot to discuss there, because I really, I've not ever looked at their budget. That's.
One issue with the hospital too is the bonds, the five-million-dollar bond issue we pay principal and interest on every year. Well, in twenty twenty-four, that's going to be.
Twenty thirty-five.
Well, but no, I've looked at the schedule.
Oh.
Of the payments off, and we're paying out, I think, what, three hundred and some thousand this year. Well, that's by twenty twenty-four, that's gonna go up a lot, that's scheduled to. Have you seen?
I have not looked at the schedule for the payments. And that does count, that falls on the commission to complete the obligation.
Yeah, the commission's responsible to pay the debt there. So, that's something we have to think about too.
Dawn, how, how does that work exactly? When we write the public building commission check to make the payment on the bond, is that the money that the commission has already designated as the ten mills recirculating? Or how, how does that?
No. So, with the public building commission, the hospital goes in and makes a monthly, what we call rent payment, because we have to enter into a rental agreement with them in order to pay that. So, they make a monthly rent payment via, or via a transfer between accounts. So, they transfer it into our account.
Okay.
And then, every six months, we get a bill from the, from the state, and at that point in time, there should be enough money to pay any of those expenses, which is one, one time it's premium in interest, and the next time it's just interest. And then, as those bonds get paid off, then we get the bonds mailed back to us. The hospital levy gets mailed in January and, and May based upon percentage of collection, and we just send it to the hospital. What they do with it from there, we don't know.
Okay, okay. So, is the, is the, they're leasing the building, in essence, from the county. I've not seen that lease. Is that with the hospital board of trustees? Is that who the signatory on the lease is?
Yes, so that was all part of the bond issue and, and creating the public building commission was that in order, so for example, let's say we wanted to build a jail, then you would enter into a lease agreement with the public building commission to lease the building in order to get those bonds reduced. So, that was one of the components of the public building commission, was that lease had to be created.
Okay, so if they built a new facility, it's not necessarily, I mean, I guess it does become county property. It, at that, if.
Yes.
Because the, the board of trustees is not, they, they don't own, they operate. So, really, if they want to build something, it would be, they're building, they're trying to build county property, is what I'm getting at. That it's not gonna be a privately owned, and that's interesting.
And I, I believe that that deed came in to the hospital foundation, but I would assume that your county attorney would tell you that no public building commission building, if, if that's the route that they're wanting to go, I, I haven't heard, but I've heard that they need to build a clinic, but I don't know how they're gonna get that done. But to get that done, if they go through public building commission, we have to own the land. I think that's one of the components of.
So, you're saying the deed has already transferred?
Yes.
The land, the parcel? Because I, there's a house that needs moved, correct?
Correct.
Okay, but the parcel of land has already been transferred to the hospital foundation, but that's a nonprofit 501(c)(3).
Correct.
So, the county doesn't own that. So, you're saying if they want to use funds because they are operating under the county, we would have to own the land in order for them to erect a building owned by the county?
I believe where it becomes a muddy mess.
Right, right. How could you, espe, especially a permanent structure? I mean, it's not like you could just lease the land with a mobile structure.
And right now, all of the hospital property is in Lincoln County's name. So, the hospital, the entire.
The clinic, the ho, well, the, and the whole thing, and I think that's some of the misconceptions. The clinic is run by the hospital, but it's not a private organization either. So, that is interesting to me, because the whole budget, what I, from what I saw, and again, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm defunct in my responsibility here, because I need to be able to understand the budget, and I've glanced at it one time. I did not receive it myself. I need to get my own copy. But what I'm seeing is that the, the whole thing is cumulative for the clinic and the hospital, but of course, they have their expenses broken down line item by particular function, whether ones over here for the clinic or ones over there for the hospital. But we're still running that, because the board of trustees is operating both entities, and we own the entire facility, if I'm understanding it.
I think they have two budgets, so the hospital budget's different. I think it's, it's in the one, under one group, but they kind of.
Yes, 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 they have it.
Paperwork-wise.
So, it, it's similar to the county, in which the county has an overall budget, but then there's county general, and then there's highway department, so it's a separate fund within.
Right, but what I'm, I'm saying is the, the hospital board of trustees is actually over the clinic and the hospital.
Yeah.
Because the clinic is not a privately owned.
No.
Entity.
It's Lincoln County.
So, it's a county clinic, which.
But they operate like two separate businesses, I think. I think the hospital, like Krista's a recognition, I think he's, she, they have a management over that versus over a clinic, they have a different management, I think. Well, I don't know, Grasno's over all of it, but you know what I'm saying? They, they do.
They're, they're keeping all their finances separate. They're keeping the finances separate. Well, one thing that did concern me that was reiterated in this letter, when I was at the last hospital board meeting, it was said that other counties have their clinic doctors take a shift in the ER, that it's pretty much commonplace practice to do that. So, we're not doing that. We're bringing in agency, you were talking about the cost of agency nursing. We're bringing in agency ER coverage.
Yeah, that's.
It does seem expensive. I, I really didn't, there wasn't much discussion on that, other than.
I'm, I'm wondering when we get these two new doctors in place, if things could change a little bit, we'll have to, that maybe, you know, they'll help contribute to.
Well, it would have to be in their contract, I suppose.
Yeah, I don't know.
That they're willing. And I apologize, I read the wrong portion of C there when I read the statute. I read the wrong C. This is the C. Prior to June first of each year, the board shall prepare a budget showing the amount it deems necessary to operate, equip, maintain, and improve the hospital for the ensuing fiscal year, and the amount of that portion thereof that it deems necessary to be raised by the tax authorized under KSA nineteen forty-six oh six, and shall submit its proposed budget to the commission, or, in case of an elected board, to the county clerk. If the commission does not approve the proposed budget within ten days after receipt thereof, it shall return the budget to the board. Upon receipt of the returned budget, the board shall consider amendment. Upon receipt of the returned budget, the board shall consider amendments or modifications and may consult with the commission concerning the budget. Within ten days after receipt of the returned budget, the board shall resubmit its proposed budget with or without amendment or modification to the commission. Within ten days after resubmission of the proposed budget, the commission shall approve or amend or modify and approve, as amended or modified, such proposed budget. The commission shall adopt the proposed budget as approved and shall make the same a part of the regular county budget. In the case of an elected board, submission of the budget to the commission shall not be required. So if the hospital board was elected, they wouldn't be bringing the budget to the commission. But it would still be our discretion to, um, subsidize in any particular amount, I suppose. But I'm still confused, Don, if the statute says up to six mil, the next four were a public vote? And I know you, we talked about that once, but, and I think you said it happened two different times, right?
I think we have ten mil.
So we're voluntarily giving them six? And then it's by public vote that we can go up to another four, is how I'm reading that?
I don't remember what the, what the levy number was in, in the nineties. But in the two thousands, then we went up to the ten. But I gave that to you guys at one point in time.
What do you propose that we do to change the practice then, Mr. Wallace, of what's been going on at the hospital?
Well, if the statute says that they need to present the budget, they need to present the budget.
I think we should probably notify them that we would like to abide by nineteen forty-six oh seven. I would assume they, they are unaware of it because it hasn't been happening.
Should we send them a letter?
I think so.
No, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna probably go and you can too, next week.
Yeah, well, so it's saying.
Board meeting.
Prior to June first, so that means it could be anytime prior to June first. And then it's basically a thirty day process. Ten days one way, ten days the other, ten days back.
Yeah, they should comply with the law. I didn't know that either. Next Tuesday, we got.
It's Tuesday the fourteen?
Yeah, the third Tuesday. Well, that's the second.
That'd be the twenty-first.
That's second twenty-first.
So two weeks.
Well, speaking of budgets, I don't, I don't mean to cause any disrespect, but I don't know how to say this without maybe sounding offensive, so please know I'm not being offensive, but, um. I think the process in which we have been doing our budgets overall is wrong and it's not fair to the auditors when they come up here. Um, I really think that when the auditor comes up here, he shouldn't have to, he shouldn't be putting in what everybody wishes and then us chopping it up while they're here. That should all be done beforehand.
I agree.
Um, so, and I, I, I did tell them because Mr. Wallace is gonna be gone during the month of, of August, that I would like to get the budget done and him here in the last part of July. And he said it would be easier if, when he came, we already had that, those budgets sent. And what we're sending him is what you intend on giving people. And then at that point in time, if the levy is still too high or we need to make some adjustments, then we're fine tuning it.
May I, may I interrupt you?
Sure.
Just to, for Randy's sake.
Yeah, I'll do it here.
No, that, I didn't mean to say yes then. So just the experience that I've had with the last two budgets. When we come in, each department head has already submitted a request, which is obviously the maximum amount that they're requesting. And that number has then been plugged into each line item. So when we look at the budget, it has the full amount. So from there, when we talk about reducing anything or changing anything around, we spend this whole day just kind of working back and forth with the numbers that were already input by the auditor. Instead of us saying, well, there was a forty-six thousand dollar request, we're gonna put it in as forty. And then work with the manipulation that needs to happen to get the total numbers to come out. Because we're also working under the tax lid and we're also working with potentially increased expenses for certain things due to un, you know, unavoidable costs. But go ahead, Don.
So anyways, when I was talking to the auditor, I, I feel like, and he's accurate with this, that it comes off that he is presenting this budget when he's not. He says, I'm solely there for data entry. And he says, that's what I've done, is data entry. I asked him if there was a county that they work with, because they work with quite a few counties that might have like a standard form in which everybody submits their budget request on. Because I think, number one, that would be helpful for you guys. I think the fact that.
How many different line items for breakdown?
Different that we do versus what the highway department does. And so he told me that Mitchell County came up with something last year. He said, no, I'm not gonna say that it necessarily worked, but he said it was at least a, a sample. Yeah, so I thought what I would do is do that. And then I really think that in order to make all of this work, we really need to have the departments coming in in the month of June. And you guys receiving their budgets and then with a drop, drop dead deadline of you guys approving whatever. Whether that's as they present it, you approve, or, or you disapprove or something. So I just feel like we need to get a little bit more control over that. So that we feel like there's more action being done. So with that being said, this hospital budget plays into, because this will be new. Um, and I realize that their hospital board of directors only needs, so they don't need to get until what, the?
The, the third Tuesday.
It'll be two weeks.
Third Tuesday of the month.
In two weeks. So we need to request that budget.
I think the twenty-first of.
Okay. So, so technically, yes. I guess we would need to be doing that. I don't look at that form for Mitchell County. I, I talked to Chris several times, but that escaped me on this past week. So I will see if I can get their form and then I'll send it to you guys. And then I feel like maybe you need to look at it and kind of figure out, or, or at least we try it and see. But I just, I think that he's right. I think that sometimes he's, he's getting the bad name because of the way.
That was one of the first things I questioned. Absolutely. You're, you're absolutely right. That's one of the first things I questioned. I said, why is this budget already filled out? When we came to the meeting to work on the budget, it was already filled out because he had been given the requested amounts from every department and just put them in, which is basically similar to the last year with a little bit of an increase. Is kind of how it works out on paper. But that may not reflect the changes that need to happen for whatever various reasons. Yeah, that sounds good. And the, the more uniform budget request allows us to look at the line items and compare. Because right now, we were just putting in commodity, salary, and contract. So if they have specific expenses like equipment purchases versus supplies.
That out inside, but when he, when it comes all down.
It's still gonna be there.
Into the form.
Yes, yeah, I understand that.
Otherwise, our budget would be more stress.
Yeah, yeah. No, I understand the need to keep it consolidated for the overall budget. But when we're looking at the line items, the justifications, just like we had some questions about district court and their expenses because they budgeted in for purchasing equipment that they hadn't prior. So. Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
So on this Hoxton's Hospital stuff, you're saying we should request a budget from them, uh, in writing, should we, as a commission?
I believe we should.
And, and also maybe when we go to the meeting, I think it's the third or is it the second Tuesday?
I think it's the third Tuesday.
Well, we could go there and I could bring that up then too, and you can come if you want to. And, but, uh, say that we would want it to and we'll do it in writing.
Right. Well, I think, I mean, it's an informative thing. I don't think that they've known in the past, maybe they're supposed to be doing this.
Right, it's an informative thing and just so that we want to comply with the statute.
Right.
And also, I guess we have the two D members over there now, Mr. Crane, witness, Mr. Weber, they'll be, I guess they're right.
I'm kind of interested as to why their attorney, Mr. Hay, hasn't given them the instruction to present their budget. I, I mean, I, I would go back to the conversation about Lincoln Park Manor. I really think if we're going to pursue anything legally, that we might need to look at some other options, um, with our attorney. Again, what's suggested in this letter to us is that we look at consolidation issues. I mean, what could the hospital do to provide some relief for these residents who are be, being asked to move?
Can you take care of some business, please?
Sure. Do you want to make a mention?
I would move that we fund the request as presented.
What's the total?
I didn't find that. I didn't see it totally.
What can I see?
I wanna say it's like fifteen thousand something.
I'd rather dip see this on this class than to. There, okay. I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the web fund committee's grant requests as presented. Is there any further discussion? I, I, I don't, now that I'm on the web fund committee for the first time, and this is the second quarter, I'm just not sure how that is supposed to work with a commissioner being on the committee to approve and then reapproving again at the commission. And I know that's how it's been done. It doesn't.
Are you a voting member?
Yes.
Huh, maybe you shouldn't be, huh?
That's what I'm wondering.
Because like the hospital board, I'm not a voting member there. I don't even go to executive sessions be, because I'm just a, there is a oversight, right? Maybe you shouldn't vote. I don't, I'm not telling you.
No, no, I.
Well, I don't know the rules or the law here.
Well, in the, in the bylaws, one of the board members is the commission member.
Oh.
But it confuses me because then you're, then you're voting at the meeting.
Now too.
And, yeah.
We should maybe, I don't know, we could ask Jennifer about that, eh?
Yes, that would be a good question for her. It has been moved and seconded to approve the payments, um, through the web fund committee. There's no further discussion. Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed.
I also had a call, uh, from Dan Winnicky asking if he'd be reappointed to the Beverly-Westfall Fire District. He said he was interested. He was leaving town for a few days. I have no problem. His term was up in February. He asked for it and I would move that we reappoint Dan Winnicky to the Beverly-Westfall Fire District Board.
I'll second that.
I have no problem approving it because I don't believe we had any other response on that. But I would suggest that we encourage people to write in. It just makes it.
Formal.
Valid, right. So it's been moved in a, moved and seconded, um, Winnicky, Mr. Winnicky?
Yeah, Dan Winnicky.
To be appointed to the Westfall Fire District Board? I'm sorry?
Beverly Rural Fire.
Oh, excuse me, Beverly.
He's based out of Westfall though.
Okay.
Where they have an office.
Well, I'd say they just have a, another station.
Yes.
Oh, it's all in the same district. Oh, excuse me, okay. There is no further discussion. Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Motion carries.
I think we can have a break, please.
Sure, let's recess until one and then are we going to try to contact Mr. Hay today? Don, did you have any input from Jennifer or?
I thought she was coming down here, so. Oh, she said, please, let's stop at office and suddenly we'd be unavailable until.
Do you want me to go upstairs, see her?
It's too. Text and see. I know they have motion days.
Okay.
So Howard, you guys plucking corn up in your country?
Yeah, it's too wet yet.
A little wet, huh? How about you guys, you bed flubber?
We're sort of flubbering in our house.
Is that your boat up there?
Yeah, pretty much.
Is the afternoon discussion on Lincoln Park Manor expected to be mostly executive session?
I think just taking a recess and.
No, until one.
Say that again.
Is the afternoon session regarding Lincoln Park Manor expected to be all executive session or some public discussion?
I would encourage public discussion. I, there might be an executive session if we get on the phone with Mr. Hay, but there are things that need to be decided in the public session.
There will be commissioners, county, everything, and probably.
There's also, because we're a county of less than fifteen thousand people, we can actually consolidate things. Like, for example, we can contract, instead of having a separate health department and a clinic, Lincoln County can contract with the clinic to handle all of the, um, uh, health department responsibilities. That way, all of the staff that's over there could be consolidated into one building. So we're not paying air conditioning and maintenance and everything in one building. They can all be over at the hospital clinic.
Okay. Jennifer, thanks for coming down.
No problem.
I assume you read the email we were shown that you got from Mr. Grace.
Yes. And I've been in contact with Mr. Hay. He's just not available for after one-thirty today to speak to us.
Okay.
I tried to get that done earlier, but he was out of the office.
Okay.
So if you, I'm, can send him an email right now.
Sure.
We discussed some of this earlier.
Okay.
And I vented my opinion and we, we talked about some of this stuff.
He did provide you some information.
Okay.
But it may, you know, be necessary for us to go to executive session.
Have you looked at our lease again any time?
I'll be honest with you, I had motion day today, so I.
I know you're not prepared for.
Full up today. It was not a good morning.
But have you familiarized with it at all in the recent weeks? Because Don was just looking at it and we were talking about how the option for the lesee to, to out is very limited.
Right.
And so, you know, if there's this big general concern about closing the facility, and I said if he wants out of the lease, he can just come to us and request to be out of the lease.
Right, absolutely.
Um, so.
But, but, but he could give like sixty, ninety days, right, to him, anytime he wants, right?
Well, and I mean, if we wanted to require specific performance on the lease to try to keep him in, we would just have to file suit.
But he can't just go, I'm closing in sixty days and give us a notice like that?
I mean, he could give us a notice, but then that, I think.
They can't, they couldn't physically act on it, huh?
Right.
Because we agree that, that he can't just give sixty days notice.
Yeah, maybe you could glance at that and just give us a little update on our own lease.
Yeah, and how, and how this whole thing functions, that probably was incorrect.
No problem.
Well, you were just.
Well, I just don't want to sit home there.
I know, and I'm with you on that.
And I don't care if we're gonna do it anyway, we're for a special management. I don't care. It's just, I don't want to sit home there. And I know funding is an issue because we fund a lot of stuff and we're broke. But gosh, it's, it's a, the nursing home is a big asset to our community.
But it's also kind of like what Mr. Wallace was saying earlier, is that.
It's not counting.
If, regardless of the amount that it costs today for this year, what is going to happen? Because there's no use in investing in something that we cannot ever potentially sustain. We have to find another way and.
Well, that may be true.
You know, funding it for one year is one battle.
One thing, yeah.
Funding it for the next ten years is different.
I know, I agree. And maybe it's not feasible no more. Maybe the facilities get too old. I don't know. I just hate to sit home.
But we, but we don't even know the census because it is part of the lease obligation that we reported the census monthly and we haven't been. So we don't even know what the census is currently.
Well, and part of that is, you know, they're not necessarily communicating on things that help us move this forward in any way, shape, or form. I mean, I, I think that, you know, apparently he's wanting to do some things. I mean, I've shared that with Mr. Hay. Because I thought maybe he needed to weigh in a little bit on some of the options that we had. Because I know there's been discussions about what it takes to keep them, whether or not this is getting to a place where we need to be doing something different.
Yeah.
And getting some other supervision over it.
Well, I talked to him Saturday and he was like closing down, you know, we talked about the long-term assisted living. And then also he was, I said, you can't, you keep that open? And then he said, well, I can't financially handle it now because two of the residents were gonna go the full time and he only have three left. And he said he can't afford that.
But he's not talking to Kadas, I'm assuming, and telling them, hey, this really needs to be a receivership.
Right, no, not yet. He didn't tell me that. And then.
Which is my, that's what she's just, she's making my point, right?
I'm gonna, I'll get away with it.
Now.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm just saying what he said. And so I got concerned on the whole place. Maybe it ain't that simple. Maybe he just can't close it. Maybe he's just trying to scare me. Maybe he's just trying to scare me to talk to you guys to...
I don't think it's as simple as he's playing it out to you to be.
Okay.
Okay? The, the issue, though, is it's twofold. He, one, has K-Dads, and he has the responsibility of patients out there, and all the things else that he has to deal with them that aren't necessarily within our purview, but they're there. And secondly, we have our lease agreement, which has a very limited reason why he would need to get out, and it's not listed in their financial.
Okay.
So, if, if he's going, he has a twofold kind of issue that he needs to be dealing with. Now, I'm not saying that there isn't some financial concerns, because we've heard that forever, but he still has to be able to take care of the patients. So if the financial situation is impacting his ability to take care of the patients, it's a receivership. That's what that is.
Right, and...
But if he's not telling K-Dads that, then that's a problem. And my understanding is, there hasn't been any new information given to K-Dads or anything which would allow us to do it in that situation from Mr. Hay.
Okay.
But we even have the option of an internal receivership, which means he can come to the table and say he wants to relinquish his rights to the lease, and then we say, "Okay, we take it from here," and we transition internally to a new management firm, but we're receiving notice, notification from him that he's willing to manage it for a five percent on the, on the gross income. So to me, that's nothing more than an offer to say, "I'll do what any other company would do," but I also want to have this particular payment made to me for losses that he incurred while investing in a new business. That's not our responsibility to cover his losses for his investment.
You're basically at square one with him because you're having to negotiate a new lease agreement, and how is that going to be? Are you gonna require benchmarks, are you gonna require some satisfaction of something? Do you want something, a quid pro quo, something for something, to be able to do all those things? I mean, you're, you're back to square one, and so you're gonna have to be doing that with anyone, per se.
Sure.
But that maybe not, isn't him.
Right.
You know?
A new management comes in, we're gonna have to do this with them too.
Right.
Right, yeah.
So that's, that's my only thing. I mean, if he can't do it, he can't do it, then say you can't do it.
Yeah.
And the standard offer on the table from management firms is five percent of the overhead, which means, not the overhead, excuse me, from the gross revenue, which means that anyone's capable of doing it, and if there's a deficiency in covering those expenses, that comes back on us since we own it, but we have not really calculated what that exact number is. But to just throw out a number to John Grace, for him to say he would keep the assisted living open, I don't see how that's going to solve any long-term issues.
Yeah, no, I know.
It's just not gonna be a long-term...
It's a Band-Aid.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a Band-Aid.
Which doesn't also...
But if the Band-Aid is important to this board, and the Band-Aid is that we want to keep assisted living open and doing all that...
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I think we need to go into exec, and we need to talk to Dick Hay, and we need to figure out something that...
But let's not forget that the, before you came, the home health operation was operating out of Lincoln Park Manor. It's still called Lincoln Park Manor as far as its ownership. And that no longer is operating out of there, and we were told that it was not making money, and that's why it was being considered to be ceasing to exist, you know, in that facility. Yet, recently, we've read in the newspaper that this Lincoln Park Manor Home Health Services is operating out of Lucas, Kansas. So it's obviously lucrative, so much so that it's been moved to a different location and hired more people. That concerns me. I don't think that when we're dealing with that type of a, uh, business proposal, I don't know how to word that, but I'm saying if that's the business proposal that's laid out on the tables, we're gonna take away home health because it's not making any money. Next thing we know, it's next door, you know, being, that income is funneled away from the operation that we're subsidizing. So, to me, that wasn't above water enough to justify this, this loss, this financial loss. We haven't really seen it on paper. And if they need more people in assisted living, they could be advertising for more people in assisted living or trying to get new residents. To just say you can't afford it, their cash pay, it's not, they're not waiting on Medicaid checks for the assisted living people like you do in the nursing home side. So, that being said, I, did you look at the lease and...
Like I said, it's very limited as to how we can get out of it, but it's a twofold issue. I think we need, I think we have already discussed some issues, and I think we need to talk to Dick Hay today in executive session, is what I think.
Okay.
Is that fine?
But he hasn't responded to me yet.
He's a busy guy.
Well, he was just getting back in at one thirty. So, I mean, if we want to call a recess for fifteen minutes, that's fine. We come back at one thirty, and I'll call his office and try to get ahold of him.
Let's, let's do that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Would you like us to go into executive session before you call him, or how did you want to do that?
Um, whatever you want to do.
Had you received an email yet?
Yes, he's, he's available. I said one thirty-five.
Okay.
Because to give us a little bit of time. I was looking for his number.
That's fine.
But he... We're at one thirty-three now, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I moved to recess into executive session for, what do I want to say?
Why don't you just go until two?
Half an hour? Okay. Uh, for thirty minutes, for the purpose of discussing Lincoln Park Manor, um, potential legal action pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen-two B, number two, consultation with an attorney, to reconvene with County Attorney Jennifer O'Hare, the commission, and Dawn Harlow, to reconvene in the basement meeting room of the courthouse.
And Dick Hay?
Oh, excuse me, yes. No, I didn't. And Dick Hay.
I'll say.
Hi, Mr. Hay, Jennifer, how are you doing?
All those in favor vote aye. Aye. None opposed.
Well, we were...
Um, Mr. Hay, I think we're out. Yes. Do you think maybe you could send me that information that you were just talking about in a quick memorandum after you talked to your partner?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Because I just wanted to alert you that public's coming in. Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, I will follow up with you, okay? Thank you, Mr. Hay.
Okay.
Bye. My phone's about dead.
I think it's very important that the public understand, as much as they know that we own the facility of Lincoln Park Manor, we do not run the business. There is nothing that we can legally do to alter what's happening there. And even if this group, two, three of us, decide to allocate funds for use at the nursing home for whatever purpose, it may not even be legal to do that with a private company.
Yeah.
So that needs to, that's, that's a misperception, I think, because they think that if we own the building and we're paying for certain things, which we're paying for physical, real property there, we're paying for nuts and bolts.
Right, right.
We're not paying the payroll.
Well, I maybe got misunderstood here, no reason, I thought maybe you could be, because I saw if we're gonna get, what you guys have been dealing with, with getting a new, uh, management firm in here, what your options would be, and that you had to say, "We may have to subsidize this two hundred thousand dollars." That's in a bunch of these earlier documents Jennifer gave us in these books here. And, you know, and I thought since we may, if we get a new management firm in here, we may have to subsidize them to run it. And I thought that's where I got the misperception, saying, "Well, if we do subsidize this new management firm with maybe a mill levy or whatever, maybe that's why," I thought, "Maybe now we can help Grace out in a similar manner." But we probably can, just what we're saying.
Here's, here's the difference, though.
Right, Jennifer, we probably can.
But the difference is, we, for, for the hospital, we appoint the, appoint the board, the board runs the administration.
Yeah.
That's the setup. This is not the setup with Mr. Grace.
I know.
He is renting the building from us, therefore we are no more than a landlord. So, until we get some feedback like you just asked for, I don't even know that that's legitimately an option, and I'll just be vocal and say, "I don't want to do that option."
Well, I, I agree too.
I think it's kicking the can down the road with a management firm that is just like any other. Why would we go with the same one that causes problems?
Yeah, and I agree too. Now, I found out a lot more about all this stuff, like, like you say, we may have to subsidize them even if we want to.
I think our, our option in subsidy is the rent.
Yes, I see that. I see that.
I mean, you know, we will provide the building and the upkeep of this building if you will run this facility. I think that that would probably be the, the cleanest that I can see is, you know, that that be written into the lease, and maybe, maybe we write it in for a dollar or something. I don't know, but, but I can see that that may be one way. I personally do not like writing a check to a, a business from the county.
Right, I don't either.
Unless we have some verification of some services that we have gotten in return. I, uh, I really think that, that we're in a, a point where I'm not sure we can do too much about the assisted living. I think, you know, that, that's his business, that's, that's his call. You know, the people that are calling us should be calling him.
Yeah.
You know, he's the one that made that decision. He's the one that's responsible for that. And I think that's, you know, unfortunately, we're looked down as, as being involved in, but we're not. We're not really involved in that part.
Not the business.
But I think it's important that we stress the fact that we want to keep it open. And I still say, he's got, at some point, he needs to be across the table from us. Now, I know, I know we have trouble with communication, seemingly, we get various answers, but we need to be, he needs to be there so we can talk to him. What is the problem? Why are you doing this? You know? We have not been informed. You know, the families were informed, but we weren't. They got the letter. Why wasn't he here Monday before he sent the letter and said, "I am sending this letter out." This is what's going to happen.
Right.
I, I think it, you know, I think we were bypassed probably for a reason. You know? And unfortunately, you know, it's happened. But I, I do think, I also would say that I think we do need to start meeting with some of these interested parties. I think the commissioner needs to sit down with them and talk with them about what our problems are, what we see in the future, so they kind of have an idea. I think we also need to have Eric put his monetary thing so we have it available.
I personally think we have everything we need.
You know?
In, in the package that you put together, Jennifer, it's, it's all there.
Anyway, we, we need his, we need his financial. That's all we have. I, I hesitate to suggest that we use Mr. Grace's at all. Number one is, that's his business, that's the way he ran the business, doesn't necessarily mean that's how it's gonna be run by a new management firm. They, what they need to know is basically the number of people we've got, kind of what the utility bills are going to be, uh, how big a payroll they're going to need, how many patients we can handle, and things like that. I don't know that they need to, to see actually the books from Mr. Grace because everyone operates their business different, and those guys that, that are running those businesses, they pretty well know. You know, with those facts and figures, they can pretty well put it together. You know? And they're gonna decide on the rent based on what they think their expenses are gonna be, not on what is being charged now.
Do you have a standard NDA that we could, um, utilize for the purpose of communication?
Probably, but I would just have to look over it just a little bit.
Okay.
And I think if we're going to be meeting with people, this board needs to designate who that person is going to be, because obviously not all of you are going to be involved, and we don't want to quorum. As I'm not trying to bypass, but, I mean, we can't...
Oh, wait, they can't.
We can't just work on a Monday.
Right.
On this issue.
Right.
So, you guys have to decide that between you.
To deal with, you mean outside, uh?
Yeah, if they want to meet or they want to know something.
Management firms?
Because it may take us to a meeting with Mr. Hay like I had to do that one time.
I have a question about if this, if the residents simply choose not to move out, they just don't, what can Mr. Grace actually do to them?
I don't have an answer on that.
Because tenants have rights. If you're a landlord, your tenants have rights. We own the building, Mr. Grace is in arrears on his rent to us, why can't we demand that he keep those residents in life? And if he's not going to provide the services, maybe we can contract with the hospital to provide any necessary services that those, because they have housekeeping at the hospital, they have doctors at the hospital, they have nurses at the hospital, so anything that the assisted living people might need...
It was said earlier in the meeting that the regulations, and I don't know this to be true, but this is what was said, the regulations are calling for twenty-four-hour nursing coverage for assisted living.
On set.
Show me the statute that requires, I mean, I, I love it when people throw these things out, but unless you substantiate it with a piece of paper that says, "This is where I found this information," I'm not gonna believe it. Just because Mr. A said Mrs. C said X doesn't make it true.
So, any suggestions how to proceed, Alexis and Aljo?
Um, well, I've been in contact with those two companies. He just mentioned that third company that I'm sure they all want the same thing. And I've explained before, what they want is basically a financial profile so that they can do their own speculation on what they'd be able to provide. And the way that they explained it to me is, they come in, they bring their own administrator, they might bring their own top-level people to change things over, they'll probably advertise for hiring in the meantime. But that being said, if we do it that way, we are essentially running the business. I mean, they, they are, we're contracting with them to do it. But I think, but I think that we would have a little more say in what goes on rather than just being the landlord to a private tenant, if, you know what I mean? I mean, I, I see that as a better setup for us if we want to have any say in what's going on, because they're running it for a percentage, for a dollar amount, not necessarily cutting their own corners for their own profits. Does that make sense?
Jennifer, you have any good input here, what we should do?
The more authority you want out there, the more they're probably gonna make you pay, so you just gotta look at the numbers, and you gotta figure out what you're able to do, what you're legally able to do, and what you have money for, because that's how it's gone historically with the nursing home. So... That's gonna be important.
Well, if five percent of the gross revenue is five percent, whether it's a hundred thousand or five hundred thousand, so any company is gonna be trying to have massive, a massive efficiency and productivity to generate that revenue. You know, they're gonna want a full census, they're gonna want to do all the swing bed care that they can, they're gonna want to do those things.
But on the other hand, you have that, some might hold them accountable for their expenses.
Well, I think, like you said, if you're, if they're coming into it knowing that certain overhead is covered, you know, the doorknobs and the toilet seats and that kind of thing, it, it is kind of like a lease agreement, but if their rent is minimal, then they know that's not an overhead cost. I...
Yeah, that, I guess that's what worries me the most about five percent off the gross. The gross is what you take in. Has nothing to do with the...
With the out.
You know, and, and farm management is, is famous on that, on when they lease out land. They take twenty percent, whatever, five percent, or whatever they take out of the pasture.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, that's theirs. I mean, you know, that's theirs. Doesn't matter how many thistles are out there, doesn't have many fish posts you have to put in.
Right.
You know? You eat that along with-
Payment.
Ninety-five percent of what, what the rent is.
Right.
You know, so that, that makes, you know, that's what I'm saying is we almost need to have some way to control the expenses.
I don't disagree. I think, though, in this type of a transition, a year of that is worth more of an investment, in my mind, than stringing along what we're doing now.
Well, I, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm telling you, that's my problem with that five percent is, that's of the gross.
I understand.
You know, are you gonna take two percent of the gross and then we can give you three percent of the net revenue or something? You know? You need an incentive for them to make it profitable as they can.
In their defense, though, there are successful businesses doing this. So, just because we're dealing with someone who's not successful, doesn't mean that there aren't others who want to be successful and who are.
We don't. It appears he's not.
True. That's true. That's very true.
You know, how can you do that? How, I couldn't do this for as long as he has if those numbers are, are like they say. I'm sorry, I couldn't do it. Nor is there a banker that would back me to do that.
Valid point.
You know?
Yeah.
You know, so...
Yes.
But, yeah, I, I think we, we start looking for management firms. I'm not sure we can do anything about the situation that has developed.
I don't know if there's nothing we can do about it in the situation.
But I think, but I think we probably can demand that he come. Come to the table. That he come to the table and explain to us what his future plan is, since this is, he dropped this bombshell on us. What other bombshell do you have out there that you're planning to do? As I said, he's got to be at the table. We can't talk to a blank chair.
I will offer myself to reach out to these three firms that-
Well, you've been dealing with Alexis, so that'd be good.
Yeah, and I, but I, I'm not putting myself on the table for all future negotiations. If someone else wants to accompany Mrs. O'Hare to Topeka, et cetera, yeah.
I'll volunteer to, because I've been talking with Grace, kind of.
Yeah.
I didn't wanna act like I'm Grace's intermediary, uh, in the go-between here. I just care about keeping this thing open. And I just wanted to deal with him on what's his position. I'm not supporting him or nothing.
What I would like is the NDA, just so I can send that along, because that's what I was requested to do. Give me your financial information and we'll sign an NDA.
Got it.
Well, I need to act on that. That's the next thing I can do. I have these particular things.
I'll work with you, Alexis, if you want me to. I, I mean-
Yeah, trade-off. I, I will, I will bring them to the ta- I will try to get the information out there and bring them to the table.
I'll, I'll, I'll do what, if you need assistance, or Alexis, if you need assistance, just tell him, could it?
Yeah.
I'll try to help however I can. And if Grace calls me, because he's kind of been dealing with me, I'll just, I'll just say, like, he'll probably wanna know what happened today. Of course, it's videotaped.
Then he needs to come, it's video, but he needs to come here because-
You need to tell him, he needs to make-
I'm gonna tell him, "You need to come here. We wanna try to deal with you one-on-one."
Right.
So, you know where we all stand and, and I'll say, "We didn't really decide nothing today." That's what I'll tell him.
Right. And he's tried to call all of us and what I'm saying is, there's, I mean-
Come here together and eat with us.
We've had, he needs to just come here. That's, would be a normal situation.
I'd welcome telling that, we need to be, because we wanna communicate what's going on.
And I will, I will put together, let me see where I'm at, this next week. I know this week's out, so there's just no way.
That's fine. You're busy with Cor, Cor, aren't you?
Well, yeah, I'm stacked this week, but Connor graduates on Sunday. So, once that's done, then I'm a little freed up. I keep telling myself that.
I'm joking. But, uh, yeah, well, I guess we don't know much more than we knew before.
Okay.
Well, I don't, anyway.
All right. All right, thank you. I'll get to work on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
If you email me that when you look over, that'd be fine.
I will.
Are we adjourned, Alexis?
Um, well, I don't know what I'm doing. I, yeah, I guess. Do we have anything, any other business to?
I don't.
I'm thinking of leaving and it's end of session. Um, I think we did all the correspondence and we did our board appointments.
That would power it, Neil.
We have evaluations on the agenda for next week.
Next week?
Yes, next Monday. She said we were going to do it on the twenty-ninth of April and we didn't. So, and just a reminder, we have an end-of-the-month meeting on the twenty-eighth instead of the twenty-seventh because of Memorial Day and we're gonna do that in the evening. So, I guess we will adjourn until the thirteenth of May at ten a.m.
Okay.
Thank you.